I'd like to call this study session Lakewood City Council for Monday, March 11th to order. The first item of business we have is a review of a petition to form the Lake Management District for American Lake and for with this we have Mr. Bucic and Mr. Vigran.
Well, good evening Mayor Anderson, members of the council. I'm really happy to be here tonight. It's a result of quite a long period of time, a lot of work that's been done by city staff as well as residents. Before you tonight for your consideration is a petition brought forward by residents around American Lake that we believe meets the requirements of the state RCW to request the city council initiate the process for formation of a Lake Management District. Between the last time we talked with you about this issue last fall and tonight, there have been a couple of areas of, sorry, that seems to be a little bit loud, a couple of changes, we're positive. The first one and the most important one perhaps is last Tuesday around 3:30, the Pierce County Council passed a resolution authorizing the city council to include the Camp Murray properties in the formation of a Lake Management District at your discretion. This was an important milestone in that it guarantees that if it's a part of the Lake Management District, they will actually, the state will pay their proportionate share of the district activities. We continue to work with leadership at JBLM to find a path by which they will pay for the initial treatment of the lake this summer as well as the ongoing lake evaluation and treatment moving forward in the future. The petitions that were submitted, there's a significant number of them, were not included in your packet because it's about three quarters of an inch thick because each sheet would have one, two, maybe three, but we did scan those and the city manager sent that out to all of you earlier today. If you would like to see them, we have the hard copies, we can pass them around to you. But what we have confirmed is that there are sufficient number of verified signatures on properties that meet the threshold of 20% by acreage around the lake to start the process. A question was raised by council member Branstadter about the Camp Murray property and we responded to that. At the time we were doing the petition, we were uncertain whether we were going to be able to include it, so therefore we did not account for that in the 20%. And my position is that since you still haven't yet and hopefully tonight, given us the okay to include that in the formation of the district, it is not going to be a part of the 20%, it should not be a part of the calculation of the 20%. Before I go any further and turn it over to Greg to start talking about the next steps, are there any questions about the information presented so far?
Okay. If Camp Murray is included, that would increase the percentage, right?
If Camp Murray is included in the Lake Management District, it will give us a higher degree of certainty on the annual funding that would come through the district to treatment of the lake. So, right now, the 20% was strictly a metric. The state has established to tell use the elected body that there's enough interest of property owners around the lake to start the process. Once we've hit this threshold, it's pretty much done, we move on to the next process. There's the public hearing and the rest that Greg is going to go through. The actual vote, they would be given their proportionate share of the vote, if you will, because each vote per parcel is given, it's weighted by the lineal footage. So Camp Murray has a pretty big lineal footage, so it would be a pretty big weight on the up and down vote of the formation. If the votes come back with majority saying no, then the formation of the district at this time would stop. If it comes back 50% plus a little bit above that, then the formation of the district will move forward and we'll continue the process with the council.
Do we know who can vote for Camp Murray? That was an issue before when we were talking about annexation, the potential of acquiring control of the boat ramp and issues like that.
That's an excellent question and actually Greg has started already looking into that with his contacts out at Camp Murray. We have a couple of their leadership that we have spoken with before and our hope is that one of them will be able to tell us, other than the governor, who has the right to vote on behalf of the property.
Before they were pointing at each other and...
To some degree, we send it to the state, the department that manages that land. They have to decide who has the right authority to sign for it.
So is there, my concern is that inaction would be a no vote.
Actually, no, because we take the votes that are returned. So, this is an extreme. Let's say 30 people send back a yes and the rest of them don't send back any ballot at all. It's 50% of the ballots returned, by statute.
Okay. So if we include Camp Murray, we can probably almost count on their inaction, so that's, I don't think they move fast enough to, in most cases.
In part, we also want to make sure we've got it to the right person, so if we know who will be the person responding for them, we'll make sure that gets targeted to that individual. Because I agree with you, the state is a very large entity and if we send it to a PO box or a mail stop, I don't have a great deal of confidence it will get to the right person.
Well, our history in dealing with them was when the tag was in favor of something, they deferred to the governor's office and then they can decide which state department and what exactly was, it should be referred to and exactly what the process should be. So there was a lot of finger pointing as to, nobody wanted to make the call independent of the governor. And so, that would be my concern here and so, we can send it to the tag, I'm sure, and it will get routed, but I think there's a high probability, if not a likelihood, that they won't take any action because of the bureaucratic bog that they run into.
They know who actually pays the bill and to whom we send the bill, what's the vote? Is affirmative?
Yeah.
Because the county council said it's fine to go ahead and do it.
Yeah, the tags, yeah, the tag's going to be resistant to anything that's a budget item.
Well, Mr. Bogey's fiddling with his control. Who counts the ballots? Who counts the ballots in the Combeck and we do, it's a city deal?
It's myself and our GIS analyst.
So fairly simple process, doesn't have to go through the auditor or anything like that, right?
Yep.
My question is if Camp Murray does eventually sign and we get, work through this July or August, we've now missed the legislative, the legislative session and therefore the budget, the two-year budget. So are they gonna, are we just out of luck for them to pay for the next through July of 2021?
Actually, not to sound a little bit cold, but we're not out of luck, the state is, because per RCW, all state properties would be viewed intact, the same as every other private parcel. We send them the bill, they figure out how to pay it and they pay it. A previous Lake Management District that was involved in, the Department of Fish and Wildlife was actually the property on the lake and we sent, we sent the ballot to them, to the head of the Department of Fish and Wildlife. We had a name, we had an address. They did not vote, so it got passed. We sent them the bill, every year, we sent them the bill and every year, the check showed up. So, in our conversations with leadership at Camp Murray, they've expressed that it would probably be simpler considering their federal state funding if we had gone down this path which we're going down because then the state, per the RCWs, is on the hook to pay the bill. It's not a huge bill, but it's probably $65, $100 a year is what their cost would be on an annual basis.
It's a budget item, yeah, for them. It's probably a budget item for them, it's, you know, not chump change.
Mr. Branstadter. Yeah, so if I understand, the advantage, the big advantage of including them in the district is then they're subject to the special assessment and they just pay it. If we don't put them in the district and we rely upon their good graces to contribute every year, then that becomes somewhat like our Western State Hospital Community Policing Program. They've got to get it into a budget even though it isn't a huge thing everywhere. So putting them in the district, whether they vote or not is, is probably irrelevant, it's a single vote. But you mentioned in the memorandum that you gave us, and I'm looking at it, it says that ballots will be mailed on May 10th with a return date and each property will be allowed one vote. That's what the memorandum says.
That's correct.
And there isn't anything in the memorandum about all votes are not equal and you mentioned votes are weighted based on the feet of shoreline. I understand the assessment is based on the feet of shoreline, but the votes regarding formation, is it just a straight, I thought I interpreted the memorandum to say, if there is, like you said, if 30 property owners, without regard to the size of their property, return ballots voting yes, that's 30 yes votes and if that's more than in the number of no votes, then it would, then it would carry. So I guess, can you clarify, are votes weighted or are votes per parcel?
Technically according to RCW, and we looked into this further, just to confirm it, the RCW says that they are weighted based on the lineal footage and their proportionate share of the costs. So in other words, if we have 50 parcels and they're all 50-foot frontage, basically they're all one vote. But if one parcel has 100 feet, it has the weight of two parcels, two votes, if you will. Even though it's one vote, it is weighted. Camp Murray would have 8,900 feet, I think it is, is that right? 8,500 feet. So if they vote yes, it's a significant vote, if they vote no, it's a significant vote. We have other parcels that, similarly, there's one property, I think it was 1,400 feet, it's a natural space area hole in common, it would have a much stronger yes/no vote than a parcel that only has 50 feet. So they get one vote, however, it is a weighted vote according to the RCW. I will tell you that on our research into other Lake Management Districts that are formatted, formed across the region, not everybody has been following that to the strictest intent. Some of them were flat out, no, we just took one vote per parcel, didn't worry about the lineal footage of the property and then they passed the LND based on that.
Well, I think that it will be important, we get to the point of where we're sending out ballots and we say that if the majority of the return votes are in favor, the district will be formed, to be certain, to clarify very clearly to people, what's the value of each vote or how they can calculate it. I don't know whether we're going to, whether we're going to be able to tell people your vote is based on 50 feet of shoreline or your vote is based on 1,400 feet of shoreline. But the 50-foot property owners deserve to know that it takes 28 of them to equal the vote of the one 1,400-foot, and I guess I'm, I guess I'm, what I'm saying is that while I understand that's how you do assessments, is the RCW directive in that regard or is it provide options in that regard? I mean, if it provides option, I would rather have one vote be one vote.
It actually, if I may interrupt, it actually says, with the ballot weighted so that the property owner has one vote for each dollar estimated as special assessment or rate and charge imposed, proposed to be imposed on his or her property. So it's a weighted vote, we don't have the choice in that. The other thing is that the ballots that they receive has to have a general description of their property and the estimated special assessment, so we have a lot of legwork we have to do to figure out what it's going to be for each one of the parcels, 432 properties, we have to get each one of the ballots right based on that, send it out to them. Yeah, so there's, it's not a simple, so, simple effort for us, so once we know that the council is interested in doing this, we'll already start the legwork figuring out by parcel what the estimated assessment would be and a property description.
Okay, like I said, I just, I just believe it'll be important that when you send it out, that people understand the weighted voting element behind this and is the city manager the voting person for the two parcels that the city owns?
I would say that's up to you, but I would estimate the city manager probably would be the one citing it on behalf.
Or the Parks and Rec Director?
He's delegated to Mary Dawesworth. So the Parks and Rec Director says, really, those are two part properties with the guidance from the council and how you'd want us to vote on it. So with that, I think I'm going to have Greg take over and just walk you through the memo that talks about the next steps, make sure it's really clear. And then I'd like to just kind of walk through the resolution, the draft resolution. We've already got a good, council member Branstadter identified an issue for us to resolve in the title and then if it looks like Camp Murray is going to be included, I would indicate that we're going to have a couple of whereas and some more language we're going to put in it before you see it next Monday.
Greg? All right. Yes, so we've already jumped around a little bit and covered some good ground. So yeah, we are proposing to bring you back the resolution next Monday and from that, a public hearing would take place. It cannot take place, it's got to be at least 30 days from when the resolution is passed, but less than 90. So we're proposing just to speed up the process as much as possible, to have a special meeting on April 22nd, which would normally be a study session, but to have the public hearing during that meeting as well. And so I think we've already addressed that with the, with the city manager, at least as a, as a request. And then as council member Branstadter pointed out, after the public hearing, we would bring another resolution to be adopted on May 6th, which would submit the question of creating a Lake Management District, assuming it would go forward, to be sent to property owners on or around May 10th. And then there's a 30-day window based on the RCW to get the ballots back. And as Mr. Bucic indicated, it is one vote per property, but it is a weighted vote depending on the amount of frontage. And if the proposal receives a, basically a simple majority vote, the, in favor, then the city council would adopt an ordinance on or around June 17th, which would create the district. And after that, the special assessment role would be prepared and that would be confirmed perhaps as early as July 15th and the district would be in place.
Mr. Whelan?
So with the ballot that goes out, what's the education material that goes out? Just a cover letter or some explanatory data that reflects that this is a proposal by many of the lake owners themselves? It's not the city pushing a fee on them, it's actually the owners themselves are looking to tax themselves like we do at Lake Stilico.
Yeah, we haven't prepared anything yet, but I think it would be definitely in some educational material hitting the highlights as far as, you know, how do we get to where we're at, you know, why and who, why, what? And then the things that are required is what's in the RCW as far as the description and how much frontage and what their assessment would be.
I would think that that piece, and we've got some time before it has to go out, but I would think that that piece should be developed, run by the homeowners to make sure they're comfortable with the language in it.
Actually, they've done that.
Have they already? Okay, great.
They did a terrific job over this last winter, putting together FAQs and some information. And that's part of what they were using to help spread the information, gather the signatures on the petition.
For the petition, okay, great.
So we take that information and if it needed to be modified based on the rates that are put forth, Camp Murray being included, modify that, make sure that goes out to the property owners.
That sounds good to me.
Mr. Branstadter?
Okay. I am concerned that in the draft resolution, apparently we have to say, what's the, what is the anticipated assessment per linear foot and what is the total amount that would be collected? And what we have said the amount of money to be raised over 10 years is 202,000 and that that was based on the fact that although we need 300 and some thousand over 10 years, that we anticipated getting money from, for the federal and state lands. If we're putting Camp Murray in the district to where they're going to pay the assessment, then perhaps the 202 should be more like 270 because it needs to be, the only other money is going to be the federal contribution, whereas the 202 looked like it was calculated anticipating there'd be a federal and a state and then the assessment. So if that could be, somebody with the, they don't have to use calculus, but they can use whatever they want, but I think that the resolution that we see in a week should have had that number investigated to make sure that if it needs to change because Camp Murray is going to be inside the district as opposed to outside the district with a special set of money coming from the state.
You're exactly right and once we have the nod from the council to include the Camp Murray, our intention is to go back to the exhaustive spreadsheet that was developed and shift the costs that were coming from the state from Camp Murray, from the category it's currently founded in and put that into the cost recovery for the LND. And then you're going to see the LND costs would go up, but the proportionate share because there's more property sharing it across the board, that will affect the rates a little bit too. So that is work we have to do and we just begin that very quickly.
So in the extra, interest of expediency, is there anyone has an objection to including Camp Murray? You always have the opportunity when we pass a resolution to object to or modify the resolution, but for expediency going forward, that's good to know.
Good. Thank you.
Ms. Barth?
So, Mr. Bucic, does the district, thank you, does the district allocate any funds for admin fees back to the city?
Yes, in fact it does. Within the spreadsheet, we have worked with the residents who've been closely aligned with us over the last year and a half to identify what the city's role and responsibility will be. There are certain portions of these administrative functions that they said that they feel that they can take on and set their discretion. So annually, if I'm remembering correctly, we have about $5,700 that we think that our staff are going to be charging the Lake Management District. The issue is, is that they have a fixed dollar amount every year. The annual work plan that we will work with them to develop will identify how much work they need from us versus how much volunteers are going to do versus how much others are going to do. If they ask us to do more than they had anticipated initially, we'll get paid for it, they just need to figure out how to balance the funds that they have. We've also, the way this is laid out, because what's proposed, they don't have any money to start with, let's face it, right? The district doesn't exist. The goal is to treat the lake this year. So in order to make that happen, we have a $75,000 grant from Department Ecology. We're proposing to use surface water funds to pony up some of the money, 30, I think it's about $30,000. Their first collection, they're going to pay us back a good chunk and then they're going to finance the rest of it from the district, out of the district, over a period of 10 years with interest. So they're going to be paying us back, the assumed interest right now is about 3%. It's going to vary from year to year, we're going to have to keep the utility whole. So if it goes up, they're going to pay us more, if it goes down, they're going to pay more. But the way it's set up, they're actually, because once it's fixed, it's fixed for 10 years. So to make this work, since they've got inflationary costs in some of the activities, our costs of interest may or may not, we're going to fix that as an estimate. We're going to overcollect in the first few years and then undercollect in the rest. So whatever money comes in, we're going to be very careful to work with the representatives from the community to say, if you do these things, you're going to spend down the money you need in later years. So it's going to affect your ability to do actions in the later years. So we've spent a lot of time looking at that, figuring out how to balance it out. Welcome.
Any other questions? Anything additional? Keep talking, I'll go. That's okay. I think we've covered most everything in the resolution. Again, we'll bring a clean copy next week with a couple of changes regarding making sure the intention is included in the resolution and adjusting the dollar amounts accordingly with adding in Camp Murray will make obviously some difference. So that would be the only changes. And we'll have a map that actually shows, I believe the city manager sent out the map that shows properties in the Lake Management District. We'll have a new map that also includes Camp Murray in that calculation.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, making progress. Now move to a review of the rental housing safety program with Mr. Gumm.
I'm going to go ahead and start very briefly by stating that we're further along than we anticipated to be in the rental housing safety program at this stage. In reviewing this program with other cities, we seem to have had less problems, believe it or not, and many cities have had some issues with property owners and the like and the inspection process and so forth. We haven't experienced that as much and I think that goes back to the fact that we have a pretty solid program and I also believe that we have the right people administering it through Jeff Gumm and his two associates, Heather Holverstot and Martha Larkin. So Heather Holverstot and Martha Larkin, they do a lot of the work behind the scenes and assist on the inspections because we've been a bit overwhelmed on the inspection process. I can also tell you that in this cycles, people seem to be wanting to get to us sooner and call in their inspections. And we've also seen some of our more intractable property owners seem to have to change their minds a little bit on the process. So I think overall, this program's going very well, all things considered that it's so brand new. And with that, I'm going to turn the mic over to Jeff to give you the presentation.
You want to do the whole thing?
You're going to do the whole thing. I may interject, you have time to talk.
All right. So, good evening. And what I want to go through tonight is just kind of wrap up the year in 2018, kind of give you some statistics and show you some maps and kind of show you what we've done and then transition into some inspection things that I think were interesting, that we found a couple of properties that I've showed you before that were of note and then kind of showing you what's going into 2019. So the first is kind of a map of the city of Lakewood with registered and unregistered properties. I was hoping to find some trends in these maps, but it's pretty consistent. I mean, it's, the entire city has registered properties, the entire city has unregistered properties, there's, there's a few clusters of red in the Springbrook neighborhood, kind of around the Chicago Avenue, San Francisco Avenue, there's, there's a fairly large number of units in there that haven't registered. And other than that, the rest of it's kind of all over the place, so it was kind of a nice thing to see. And other than that, the rest of it's kind of all over the place, so it was kind of a nice thing to see. So we went through the assessor's website, and we looked at properties, literally all the addresses. We took the rental property address versus the address of the registered owner. Kind of weeded them out, we were able to weed some out with LLCs, some of them were trailers and manufactured homes and so forth. We've weeded out, and actually, right before I did this program, I was, I was still weeding out some other ones in the system, so our numbers are getting a lot more accurate.
The other piece to this is CSRT, when we get complaints on housing, particularly single family, often it's found out to be rentals, and so we picked up quite a few that way as well.
Yeah, by and large, a majority of the green dots are actually single-family rentals, so we've had really good compliance with single-family rentals. Kind of shows you where we are with the year-end registration property units versus rental units. So we had three thousand three hundred and forty-six total properties registered. Sixty-six percent of those properties, or sorry, total properties, sixty-six percent of those three thousand three hundred and forty-six registered. Thirty-four percent did not. Again, most of those unregistered are some single families, some of those that we're going to have to continue to weed out, but most of the multifamily properties registered. The rental units, we get a little bit higher compliance when we have large multifamilies registered, so we've got about eighty-five percent registration rate for total units, fifteen percent unregistered. The properties at a glance kind of shows you what we have registered through the city. So yeah, you can see by and large, a majority of them are single-family rentals, almost fifteen hundred of them are single-family rentals, followed by duplex, then we go into three and four units on up. There's, there's not a lot of large-scale properties like a hundred and fifty plus, there's under ten in the city of Lakewood, but all those have registered, so it's, it's kind of a nice trend that most of the multifamilies have registered. There's, there's still a few that we have to follow up and do some enforcement on this year, but we've had good compliance with multifamilies as well. Inspection, yes? Correct. Yeah, they have to come up to date, so they have to pay their two thousand and eighteen fee as well as their two thousand and nineteen fee. And the two thousand and eighteen fee would include a, a double fine, so a twenty-four dollar per unit versus a twelve dollar per unit. They're, they're in essence responsible for all of those fees that are, are due. So they're responsible to pay for the previous owners' fees as well.
Well, this gets back to an issue of equity. If we have a program in place, everyone knows what the rules are, you have been notified of requirements for licensing. It is important that we treat everyone the same. So the purpose from the city's perspective would be that if it's not been paid, then you need to come up and pay for it. The new owner and the old owner can work out the difference as far as I'm concerned in the price of the property.
I see your point, but it seems to me to be just slightly unfair for a new owner to be held responsible for the malfeasance of an old owner. Your point is well taken, if the initial owner decides to not pay the fee, and then he comes in a year later, I agree with you, I have no argument with that. But if you're a new owner, that's like saying, this guy was irresponsible, but you get a new owner that may or may not be responsible, why does that person have to bear the burden, the financial burden of someone else's poor decisions? That's my problem with that.
This is Barth.
Thank you. So there is a provision, just to try and clarify this, there is a provision in a purchase and sale agreement that directs what happens if an assessment, a lien, a levy, a fee, I mean, I don't know if it says fee, but the intent is there, and so the seller has to say that there are or are not such. And the buyer says, I'm accepting those, or they'll be paid prior to closing. So there is some fallback there. And I don't think that we have to babysit.
Nope, you're absolutely right, because the buyer knows that going in, and the burden's on that buyer. I stand corrected.
What was your, I didn't hear.
Could we record a lien, so there's a record note, so can they pull up the title?
Question for legal, I, I don't believe we'd have a lien authority.
That's true, it's more processing, it's worth, yeah. Recording fee to the county would be more than.
It would. So for, for two thousand and nineteen, this slide kind of breaks down what, what we did for property inspections. We have four hundred city inspections, ninety-nine city-approved private inspectors, and this is just the initial inspections, we also did re-inspections as well. So of the inspections, the city did about eighty percent roughly, private inspectors did ninety, or sorry, twenty percent of that. And those are numbers that roughly the, the private inspectors realistically didn't start inspecting until probably about October, only because we offer free inspections, so they weren't availing themselves of private inspectors, they were availing themselves of free city inspections for the first ten months, so.
You may see that the private inspector number go up in subsequent years, we don't know yet, but that's my thought.
Inspection results, so the city looked at, let me catch myself up here. Four hundred and ninety-nine total units, again, four hundred and nineteen of those units failed. So unfortunately, the initial go-around, we had a fairly high failure rate of those units. Eighty-seven percent of those units failed, so I'll get in a slide or two later, we'll kind of show you the units that have failed, but it's been fairly consistent all year long, the things that we've, we have been seeing failed. The re-inspection results, we looked at, this is two hundred and twenty-one total properties that were re-inspected. So once we get to the re-inspection, we're seeing significant improvements. You've got ninety-two percent pass rate, eighteen percent fail rate. Again, the rental units are pretty close, seventy-eight percent pass versus twenty-two percent fail. So there's, there's a few of the, of the properties that are outstanding, that we have not gone out and re-inspected. So there's, there's a few of them remaining that we have to, to follow up with in two thousand and eighteen. The nice thing is, is the, the property owners, if, if they don't have any questions, they, they pretty much fix their property and, and move on. The ones that have questions have come into Heather and myself and Martha, and we've been able to assist them and kind of get them on the path. And the building department's been great to work with, issuing permits and, and getting these things fixed. So we haven't had a, a lot of problems moving them from a failure to a success rate in relatively quickly.
Because a first inspection is free, a re-inspection costs money, unless it's a very, very minor item, in which case we just let it pass.
So this slide shows the, the common items that have failed. So again, for the, the year-long, it's been ground faults, circuit interruptors. We've got water heaters, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, all fairly significant life safety issues. The other is kind of the other category, obviously, but the one that, that grew kind of the most rapidly was electrical. So we found all kinds of wiring issues, open and exposed wires, bare conduit here and there, just all kinds of electrical issues that, that were generated in mostly multifamily properties.
So I understand the, the various electrical issues, we've seen that, but I, I do have some concern about inspecting the properties that were code compliant when they were built for GFI. The GFI requirements have changed dramatically with respect to the building code over the years and requires a licensed electrician to change a GFI, although most any competent handyman can do it. What are we, what are our standards with respect to, you know, a building that's built in, in, say, nineteen seventy-five and has a GFI in the bathroom, but doesn't have one on every circuit?
We require all houses within six, well, all rooms that have a water source, any outlet within six feet of that have to have a GFCI-protected outlet. It's the, whether or not it was built in a time when it was required or not, say, the same, it kind of goes with smoke detectors. Homes built back when only had a smoke detector requirement in hallways. This program added the smoke detector, smoke detector requirement in bedrooms, so there's things that we've added.
My question is where that requirement, the retrofit requirement came from? The, the smoke detector and, and carbon monoxide detector requirements are a creature of the RCW. Where does our retrofit of GFIs requirement come from?
It's a, it's just a program requirement that we added based on, we looked at the International Property Maintenance Code and saw where properties were going, and basically adopted that from the International Property Maintenance Code.
So it's an international property maintenance code?
Yes.
Requirement to retrofit?
If, well, if, if you're changing outlets and so forth, yes.
Pardon?
If you're changing outlets and so forth, yes, you would, you would be bringing those outlets up to the electrical code. We're making them change those outlets.
Yeah, I have heard, you know, I, I did get some blowback and say, you know, somebody say, you know, I have to put in a hundred and twenty GFIs, and my building was compliant when I bought it, we've never had any problem, and I got to get an electrician, and you know, that number's made up, I don't recall what the exact number was, but there's a whole bunch of them. And, and I've run into that as a requirement for the sale of a property where the, you know, the, the buyer requires it, said, well, okay, when we do our inspection, we, we, we want a place that has these GFIs in it. Part of the give and take, but it wasn't a, it wasn't, it was a contract requirement, not a code requirement. So I do have some concern that we have, we're imposing a requirement that's not in code, a retrofit requirement on people. If, you know, we, I, I think as a council, we could adopt an ordinance that says, you know, like sprinklers or something else, we say, okay, be compliant with building code. If you, if you want to change the, the numbers on your door, you have to retrofit your GFIs. But I, I don't recall we've taken any action on that to require people to do it.
My thought would be, let me speak with the building official and track down the specific requirement and report that to the council.
Thank you. Can I ask a couple?
Sure.
Questions?
Come on.
So, smoke and carbon monoxide, water heaters, so, and then you also have electricals, so explain the water heater one.
Water heaters have to be installed, we're making them.
Oh, is that the straps?
Water heater straps, they've got to have a temperature pressure relief valve, it has to be vented to the outside, those types of things, so.
Okay, and then doorways, stairs, decks, you're going to go into, most of them are rotten?
Yeah, we, on, on that section, there's not a lot of doorways that are, are failing, it's a lot of stairs and decks, and it's typically exterior stairs and decks, and we found those in multifamily units primarily.
And what's in other? Because there's over three hundred, or almost three hundred in other.
There's, yeah, there's so many other categories, like, that's, that's things like your, your numbers on your units weren't in compliance. You've got holes in your driveways, you've got unlevel sidewalks, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of other requirements in there.
What things have surprised you the most? You've been doing this almost a year.
For me, stairwells and decks.
Yeah, meaning?
The deteriorated condition of the facilities. Many ti, many times, they were poorly constructed. The amount of rot on stairwells and decks has, in my mind, been surprising because they were not designed properly. Many of these were built prior to incorporation.
So what would be, and I, and I saw the pictures, and we'll see them here in a minute, but what would be the new standard? Would they have to be concrete and metal, or if you had to build one?
No, I mean, all of the decks are getting engineered, so they're going to be designed by somebody other than the city of Lakewood. So whatever an engineer is designing and an architect's drawing up, is, they have minimum load requirements and minimum requirements for the handrails and stuff, but not really a design requirement specifically.
Okay, all right. And anything else that surprised you?
I was.
About the whole program?
Yeah, one, I mean, I was surprised that we got eighty-five percent compliance in the first year, I mean, that, of the units. That's, that's a testament to the citizens of Lakewood getting out there and registering. I mean, granted, we sent out letters and, and kind of badgered people to get them into the program, but they still, by and large, did it of their own volition when we started this program, so that was, that was a very nice thing. From a building perspective, the thing that amazed me mostly was all the electrical violations that I saw and illegal wiring and multifamily units that have done modifications throughout without permit. I mean, it's, it's one of the things that when we started the program, we were looking at, at permits for multifamily versus single-family, and it was ten to one, single-family versus multifamily revenue. I know why, unfortunately, they haven't been getting permits, so it's, that was kind of the thing that jumps out at me is electrical and structural modifications to multifamily buildings.
There's a thought here, there's quite a bit of deferred maintenance being practiced, and, and that's what we're finding. And after this program runs for several years, you'll see less of it.
Sorry, are you on, on track to do a five-year complete cycle?
We're getting there, we're still, I still have a number, there's four hundred units or four hundred properties that did not get inspected for the lottery that we're going to have to start following up and get them, which is what we're going to talk about in two thousand and nineteen. We've got a couple hundred rental units, so we've got to re-inspect and so forth, and, and then get going, so a little bit of a curve.
You get the thing, too, that goes on, is that they'll come in, they'll, they'll get their inspection results, the property owners will start working on it, they'll hire a contractor, they get a building permit, and then everything stops. And then you have to wait six months because that's the period in time in which the building permit is still active. And oftentimes, there's quite a, quite a bit of negotiation that goes on behind the scenes between the property manager and the owner, where the property manager says, we need to take care of this, and the owner says, this is not in my budget for this year. So, you know, we're having to deal with that as well, particularly on projects where the level of, a level of activity was fairly significant or things were found out that nobody knew how to fix, which, for example, was with Merrill Creek Apartments, where they went in to try to fix decks and things like that, and they found out that major sections of the building were deteriorating. So now it wasn't engineering for the decks, it was engineering for an entire wall. Those things take time, and so while we're continuing to do inspections on, on two thousand and nineteen properties, we're still in the background fixing and, and getting rid of all the two thousand and eighteen outstanding work.
So moving into some of the inspections that were notable for two thousand and eighteen, this was the Morning Tree Apartments. This one was actually one of the first inspections that we did here. This was kind of indicative of some of the electrical issues that I've seen on, on some properties. But, I mean, you can clearly see you've got electrical panels, the one in the middle has electrical tape, taping up a connection. That's not the biggest problem, but that's a huge problem. You've got electrical service panels without cover plates on them, you've got wires sticking out, you've got, what's hard to tell is there's all kinds of wiring that's been added in these units, there was, there wasn't ever any inspections. The Village at Sealy Lake Apartments, this one is one that had significant deck damage and deck rot. They're complying, actually, both of these units are doing a good job in complying. But you can see the, this one had three-story decks starting to fail. The middle picture, it doesn't really do it justice, but kind of in the very top where the railing meets the siding, you can see there's a, a gap forming there. So what's happened is the post is starting to rot and it's starting to sink, and all of those decks are starting to pull off. And all of those decks are starting to pull off of and away from the building. So, and that's when we inspected, there was probably fifteen or twenty buildings with decks like this that are all starting to fail. So these are all under permit and design right now.
I mean, this, this is a tough call. I mean, if they're out there tonight and the thing falls off. So, I mean, how are you making those decisions between just red tagging all the thing and?
Usually we get the building department to come out, so I'll, I'll call the building inspector and say, hey, you come out and look at these. I mean, it's ultimately the building official's call, so he will come out, Roy in this case, and look at these. And all of these units that had these issues, he made them secure the doors, board them up to keep people from going out on them the same day that we inspected them, so.
Okay.
So this one, I mean, you can, you can see another, another set of decks. The, the middle photo, it's a three-story set of decks. The, the one on the bottom, you can see the siding is kind of broken off. That's because that deck is actually falling away. That, that supporting wall between the decks is completely rotten. Again, you can see a gap between the rail and the building. So, and again, posts that are starting to rot, so these ones have a, Village at Sealy Lake has a decent number of decks that they're replacing and they're, they're slowly working their way through it. Hawaiian Village Apartments was another one, ninety-nine units. These are kind of some of the, the things that we typically see. You can see a water heater that's got wires kind of sticking out of it that aren't, aren't properly protected. They're kind of just randomly stuck together and taped together. The middle photo shows another common thing that we have seen. And that's a understory in a storage room that passes through into space that would be below an apartment. So typically, there's a, a one-hour fire separation between any storage space and apartments. In this unit, they removed the sheetrock, eliminated their fire separation between storage and, and livable units. Mr. Rensselaar?
Mr. Rensselaar? So, when you encounter a problem like this, even though you have, one of these apartment requirements is only to inspect five units or six units? And in the absence of failure of this sort of initial inspection, that our, our program had some leeway to then expand the inspection to more units than just the original one? How is that working out? Or, or when you discover something like this and the building official goes out and the whole problem more into a, a code enforcement situation as opposed to strictly a rental housing?
We kind of, I mean, you kind of hit the nail on the head. We kind of jump into a, an all-hands-on-deck sort of a deal. Typically, when we, when we do these, I, I call in the building inspector, he'll come out and look at the units that, in this case, for the fire separation. And he'll, he'll make sure that those units are complying with building code. So we get them involved and they follow through with a lot of the building code things. We continue to follow through with rental housing program. And, and under the, the program, yeah, there is, there's a provision that allows us to inspect potentially up to a hundred percent of the units if the, the conditions are, are deemed to justify that inspection. So it's, in this case, we did go out and look at a, a larger number of units when we went out a second time. So we typically do that based on whatever we see.
So when a property, multi-family property, gets into a situation where there is pervasive structural problems throughout the complex or any, you know, persistent building? When you work through the rental housing to get the required units inspected, okay, then we, we issue them a, a good-to-go piece of paper? Do we withhold that piece of paper until the building official is satisfied that all of the problems are resolved? Or do we really just say, when you just work off our check list, put the units that they're the checklist?
No, we make sure that the, any of these code violations, the building official signs off before we do our final inspection. So they're, that way we know they've done things that we can't inspect. So a lot of the one-hour fire safety and stuff, we know there's not a fire safety or a wall there. Someone has to design it, somebody has to put it together, somebody has to look at it. That's the building department. So we have them sign off on a lot of that before we even show up to do our inspection.
So previously you indicated that there were only one hundred and seventeen units that had not passed the inspection?
Of, of the units that we inspected?
Two second inspections, third inspection, you pared that down because they were, you know, only one hundred and seventeen that hadn't passed the inspection?
Correct.
When you, when that, that one hundred and seventeen units, are they representative of a significant number of more units? Or is it just some of those, pick, pick the last couple of, the highest Hawaiian, no, it's ninety-nine units? It's a nine-nine three complex, but when you look at, I'm assuming that some of their units are in that whole seventeen?
They are, they're in that total.
But not ninety-nine of them? That one seventeen doesn't include ninety-nine units, it includes ten?
They're, they're ninety-nine.
Needs to be done to affect all ninety-nine?
Correct. So, yeah, so the problem is understated basically in here. Yeah, there's, there's a number of units that potentially could be added on top of that if we do a full-on inspection. So it's, what's known units?
What you don't see too are the third, the, the, the third level of reinspection. Finally, we do get there, but just for the ease of presentation, we did provide that information.
Yeah. Let's see if we can get through these, back to the second slide for Hawaiian Village. Would kind of show you some of the other things that, again, this is, a lot of this gets to the building department when we find these. So this is a stairwell that was in fairly dilapidated condition. The slides don't quite do it justice, but it's an extremely rotted access. It's a three-story unit, so the stairwell would affect all three. The posts were rotten, the supporting beams were rotten, the members were rotten, the railings were rotten. This stairwell is about ready to fall down. And I was shocked that I could walk up it. I didn't jump up and down, but I walked up this thing and documented it. It was a very, very unsafe structure.
I just, I would also point out on things like this, the building official, this is a basic health and safety issue, could have declared the building unsafe, in which case all the people living in this unit would have, or building would have to be relocated. The other solution is to develop some sort of temporary system to provide for adequate ingress, egress from the units, which is what we did, provided they come in and get their building permits to make final repairs. So those are kind of the things that are kind of going on from project to project. Because if we can, we don't really want to relocate people if we can avoid it because it's, it's time-consuming and it's expensive and, and we have a lot of work to do. So we do those temporary things fairly frequently if people cooperate.
So, getting down in the weeds, on the decks, do you block off access to the decks before they're repaired? Well, I had some personally experienced.
All of them are.
Was one of a, a couple of folks that bought some fourplexes and the decks were bad and they were worse than we thought. So we boarded them up from the outside, so if somebody opened the door, they can't get out and built new decks that were compliant.
Yeah, we do that when all of our, building department requires that.
Okay.
Something that I thought was interesting on this slide, and it's things when we, when, at least when I go out and inspect properties, I try and point out to people, the slide on the right, you can see the gutter drops down and you've got the splash block and it literally directs all of the water to the post. And it's like, it's common sense thing when you're doing maintenance, these are things that we try and point out to people to, may want to change in the future. The next.
I was going to be trying to grow.
Grow the, grow the stairwell?
That was, that was, that was stormwater management in the sixties when it was built.
There we go. Another property, this is one that I'm still working with right now, the Colonial Court Apartments. It's a fairly small unit, twenty-five units. But again, this was a, you can see it's a, a storage underneath an apartment building. Directly above that storage space are apartment units. You see a door in the middle. I was floored when I walked into this storage unit and I opened up that door and I saw two kids on the inside. It was a, it's an interior hollow core door downstairs in a storage room. And, and that door opens up to literally all the garbage that was in there. So there's zero fire separation between that rental unit and the storage, which is a really big deal. If that place catches on fire, it goes up very fast. The other bad thing is one of the bedrooms doesn't even have an egress window. So they've illegally converted an office space. So if anybody, if it catches on fire and anybody's in one of those bedrooms, they're not getting out. The other bedroom had a locked door as the only egress and they didn't have a key for it. So this was an extremely dangerous unit. We've, we've required them to address this unit as quickly as they can. If they don't address it, I need to follow back up with this one before the end of the month. And if they haven't fixed it, then this one's getting shut down and, and all of those people are, are getting out of there. The building department's gonna require them to vacate one of the bedrooms and, and change the egress on the other bedroom. They also have.
They can't use that as storage anymore?
Well, they can use it as storage, but they also have to organize it too. There's, there's fire code violations with being able to access that and the storage of flammables and all kinds of things. So a lot of these, when we go out and find these, usually what happens is I'll go out and find this. And so then I pick up the phone and have the building department come out. I'll have the fire marshal come out and kind of go through the property and they do their inspection reports as well.
So this is the kind of space where in some places they might ran out storage units that were hopefully built to code to people who live in the apartment building or something?
Correct.
And some people would use that as, okay, or they would use it, but they would have it properly stored.
Correct.
Okay.
And this one just used as a shop or in essence, they were mostly storing old appliances and all kinds of strange wood and plumbing. I mean, everything was in this thing. And then the slide on the right was one of the interesting ones that I, I hadn't seen for a while. But they, they cut out, this was a, a apartment complex with a bathroom above it. So they cut out the ceiling to fix the bathroom plumbing. And then they put in a dropped grid system with the sheetrock in the grid system, which doesn't get you your fire separation between units again. So you, you now have a unit, when it catches on fire, it goes straight up through the floor in the other unit. So kind of the fairly consistent things that I found in multifamily was basically avoiding a, a fire separation between units. A couple of good properties, these actually passed on the very first inspection. The, the, the first two that I'm gonna, or the two that I'm gonna show you, so the Jet Apartments is, is in the Springbrook neighborhood. Very well-maintained, family-oriented, most of the, of the people there had been there. I think the, the most recent tenant moved in, it was in the double digits. I mean, it's long-time residency in this complex. Another unit was the Hunter's Glen Apartment, which is over on a Hundred and Sixteenth Street. Fairly large complex, hundred and thirty-five units. I mean, those, those pictures kind of, I don't know if they even do the landscaping justice. It was an amazing complex. The, again, the management's been there for twenty years, the maintenance guy has been there for sixteen years.
I went there on a, on a neighborhood night out.
Kind of over by the Settler's Cemetery, or not the Sett- the cemetery at the west end of the city.
It's in the vicinity of JBL's property line.
Yeah, very close. I, I believe it backs up to it. So then, looking forward, kind of what we're looking to do in two thousand and eighteen, inspection lottery, March eighth. We mailed out the two thousand and nineteen lottery last Thursday or Friday, whatever day March eighth was. Yesterday, there was a new round of lottery winners. I always get people who call in and say, yeah, I won the lottery, I think, I need an inspection.
It was the last year they did that for military service. Were a lot of people excited about winning?
I would assume so. Two thousand and nineteen registration deadline is fast approaching, March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. We're looking at enforcement of unregistered properties in two thousand and nineteen, or sorry, two thousand and eighteen unregistered properties. We're gonna begin that starting April, starting with the multifamilies of note that are the larger properties and working our way back on the list. And that's gonna, there's gonna be a significant amount of work for those, getting the notifications out, code enforcement involved, and then following up and re-inspecting those. So hopefully, we'll get good compliance from a couple of rounds of letters and we won't have to do the stick route. We can do the carrot routine, it's much easier. Right now, we're working on hiring a second program staffer, the half rental housing safety program and half dangerous building. That person, we're looking to bring them in probably, well, realistically, it's gonna be in April. By the time we get that person hired, we have a number of applicants that we're looking at right now.
You're trying to fill the building official's position first and then moving on to the second position?
And then we're gonna look to, again, continue to monitor registration and inspection trends, see kind of how we're doing in two thousand and nineteen. And then continue to enforce code-triggered violation inspection. So when the building department or code enforcement staff find items that they deem are reasonable enough to, to inspect or things that they have found in apartment complexes where they, they've seen failures that were significant, they typically will re- send those to the rental housing safety program staff and we follow up on those as well. Any questions?
That's good, that's good. Any other questions? Thanks for the progress report. It's.
What's the attitude like, Jeff? Are people pretty good about calling for the re-inspections and?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we've developed decent relationships and some pretty personal relationships with a lot of the property managers because we're dealing with the same people over and over and over again. So the ones that we've had good relationship with, we continue to have first-name relationships with a lot of them. There's still, there's still the property owners out there who don't really much care for us to come in and, and we still have some, some issues with those. We've, amazingly enough, we've converted a few of those. It's, we try and be rational. I mean, the, the whole thing when you're working with this program, it's not, we need you to comply in twelve minutes. It's, you know, the program is here, you just need to comply, we'll get you there. What's it gonna take to get you there? So we've been really good working with them.
Okay. Well, Mr. Ginn couldn't stay up. We may have moved to review the two thousand and nineteen consolidated annual action plan and amendments to two thousand and sixteen, seventeen consolidated annual action plans.
Okay. First of all, I wanted to, I don't know if you all have met our new board member. We have a, the most recent board member, Sarah Yamamoto.
Hello.
She's gonna be involved in this process moving forward and hopefully she'll be a valuable member. She's, she seems to be connected and, and pretty engaged, so I think we benefit from having her on the board. So, good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, as the mayor said, it's a two thousand and nineteen annual action plan for CDBG and Home. So in order for the city to receive CDBG and Home funds, HUD does require that participating jurisdictions submit a consolidated plan identifying housing and community development needs, strategies for meeting those needs and how the funds are to be used. HUD requires state and local jurisdictions that receive CDBG and Home funding to produce an annual action plan. And that plan outlines funding and how it's gonna benefit low and, in, low and moderate income individuals. Through HUD consortium agreement, the cities of Lakewood and Tacoma prepare a joint consolidated plan. And that is to be adopted by their respective councils and submitted to HUD no later than May fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, which is July first, two thousand and nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. The city of Lakewood is proposing a plan that includes proposed fiscal year two thousand and nineteen allocations as well as amendments to the two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen annual action plans and debt service payments as part of the Section one oh eight loan program. So for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, staff does anticipate that the city will receive four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in CDBG funding, two hundred thousand dollars in home funding. The home funds come through the Tacoma-Lakewood Home Consortium. And the two thousand and nineteen CDBG funds, we're looking to supplement them with forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and nine cents with reprogrammed funding from two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. And in accordance with the, the CDBG Citizens Participation Plan, this year's fiscal funding process did begin with a public hearing that was held back on October fourth, two thousand and eighteen. The board heard from sixteen individuals at that public hearing about needs for community services, housing, community development, economic development. The board, from that point, formulated the goals and policies of proposed use of funds based on the, the council's meeting that we had with the board. The presentation for the council. The presentation for the council was then subsequently adopted with the goals specifically as priority one, physical infrastructure improvements, priority two, housing, priority three, public service, priority four, economic development. So based on these funding priorities, the following recommendations have been made, those are in your tables, one, two, and three of your agenda packet. Priority one, physical infrastructure improvements, they include City of Lakewood street lighting improvements in a census tract in the Oak Brook neighborhood, that's $135,000. City of Lakewood debt service for 108th Street, Section 108 loan is $51,000. Priority two, City of Lakewood major home repair sewer loan program, $165,324.09. CDBG administration of home housing services for $25,000. Priority three would be public services includes workforce, central apprenticeship training, $45,000. There was no economic development funding recommendations. Home funds include, City of Tacoma, the, being the lead consortium member, they get the 10% admin, so 20,000 would be an admin fee. Home affordable housing fund would be 150,000, and home housing rehabilitation program would be 30,000. Little side note, when I was going through the agenda packet, I noticed on page 37, there was a typo on the home affordable housing fund and home housing rehab fund, I flipped those numbers on page 37. So the, the correct number that, that we're looking for allocation would be affordable housing fund at 150, and home housing at, housing rehab program at 30,000. So approval of the 2019 annual action plan includes a, a 30-day citizen review and comment period, that's scheduled for April 1st to April 30th. Public hearing is held in the middle of that, April 15th, and then adoption of the plan is scheduled for May 6th. One additional item that I wanted to bring to the council's attention would be that the Lakewood and Tacoma are working on submitting, or we're getting, going to start working on submitting, a new five-year consolidated plan. The five-year consolidat-, consolidated plan that we will be doing is for the years 2020 through 2024. This process will begin sometime later this summer, it involves input from the Lakewood and Tacoma city councils, the public, both Pierce County and Tacoma Housing Authority, and then nonprofit providers and, and other organizations. That process does include an update to the city's analysis of impediments to fair housing, this is something that, that HUD does require on a, a five-year basis as well, this, this year's approach will be a five-year, or sorry, will be a regional approach to the five-year analysis of impediments versus a, a local approach, which has been done in all previous years. And so, in order to do that, the city of Lakewood and the city of Tacoma will be contracting a large part of that five-year consolidated plan process out, it does involve lots of, of meetings, lots of public hearings, and all kinds of feedback from the public, so those are typically farmed out to a, a consultant to do for us, so that does include, in the annual action plan, we took into account the fact that we would be hiring, those are typically 40,000 to 50,000, maybe 60,000 in expenses for both the city of Lakewood and the city of Tacoma, which is why in the, in the annual action plan, there's a proposal to include CDBG admin of home housing services for $25,000 to cover some of those costs, it's a fairly steep cost to, uh, in, incur in a five-year process. So as, as things do move forward on the five-year plan, council, you all are to be provided with updates and opportunities to provide input on the goals and the objectives. The council does approve the five-year annual action plan at the end of that process in May of 2020, so there's a, kind of a two-pronged approach coming this year, we will have the 2019 plan, and then very shortly, shortly after, you're gonna have a new five-year plan that we work on as well, so. With that, do you have any questions of me?
Mr. Ranseter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you, Mr. Gump, could you please elaborate a little bit on the, the, the previous two five-year plans, the one that we, you, you characterize them as having a local approach, and you're saying that the next five-year plan needs to have a regional approach. I, I guess, what is the catalyst for that change in, in, in orientation? I mean, you know, we have gone back and forth on issues of local control and the, the regional planning groups, you know, wanting to, 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 to be players in, 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 in housing, you know, you know, is, is this coming from that direction, is it coming from, from a change in HUD desires? Is it, uh, is it something that we in Tacoma wanted to do, and we're doing it? I mean, it, it, I mean, it, you know, was, was it an option before, but we didn't follow it, and is, is it now a requirement, or is it still an option, but that we're choosing to do?
It's a, it's actually a new HUD regulation, it came out last year, so there's still some local planning that, that we do, and then there's the regional planning, so the, the annual action plan can still be a, a local plan, in our case, the annual action plan or the five-year plan has to include Tacoma as well, because we're part of a consortium, so there's, there's kind of a, a local approach, but a little bit bigger with Tacoma involved. The, the thing that involves a regional approach that's required by HUD as of last year is the analysis of impediments to fair housing, so you're supposed to, what HUD has done is, kind of, as you were mentioning, they, organizations are getting together and they're funding larger areas, they're getting, cities are, are funding things based on regional approaches, like some of the local councils and so forth that we have, so HUD has kind of gone down that same path, they've, they've wanted to attack homelessness, not necessarily in each and every city, but across borders, so they're, they've taken the, the analysis of impediments to fair housing and kind of stretched that out, and they, and they wanna see local housing authorities involved, they wanna see cities, they'd like to see, even as far as a county approach, so it's not just the city of Lakewood and what we're doing to kind of combat homelessness and housing and affordable housing, it's kind of what the, the region or the, the county is doing, so some of it is what HUD is requiring recently, but there's still a, there's still kind of a, a local approach to the annual action plan, you, you have to develop plans to kind of combat these things, and then you can focus down on them in your, in your local jurisdiction in the annual action plans.
Well, it would seem that we have, for many years, worked jointly with the city of Tacoma, which when you look at the, the two of us together, our share of Pierce County, it would seem that we're, by coordinating our efforts, we're regional by some definition, but if I understand you correctly, now the region that HUD wants to be incorporated into our plan, is it bigger? I, I mean, I mean, is, is it all Pierce County, is, and, and, or is it, you know, you know, how, how does, does the Tacoma-Lakewood regional plan, how much does it have to look like the Sumner unincorporated Pierce County Guala plan?
It's not at all, I mean, the, you still have, you, you have two elements, you've got your analysis of impediments to fair housing, that kind of, again, it defines on what you're, what you're doing to make housing affordable for all, then you've got the annual action plan, so they're trying to make housing approaches regional, you still have an annual action plan that, that is Lakewood-Tacoma centric. There, there isn't a requirement from HUD to take our allocation process and, and pair it with Pierce Counties or King Counties, that, that, I don't, hopefully don't think that's not in the plans, I would, I would find that to be kind of a, not a, not a very good approach if, if HUD were looking at that, but right now, you, it's, there's, the really only regional element is the analysis of impediments, you can then focus and drill down on your annual action plan at a local level, so there's no requirement to develop your annual action plan on a regional basis.
So, how different do you expect the next five-year plan to be from the current five-year plan? Are we just going to say things differently, but operate similarly with, with updates for the current situation? Or, or is the, the fact that we now have to hire a consultant to help write the plan and do the analysis going to result in something significantly different?
I don't believe it'll be significantly different, we've, we've hired a, an analyst, or sorry, a consultant to do this, every single five-year plan, so we, we've done that consistently. The things that I see changing is kind of some of the, the needs that maybe weren't there five years ago, so I mean, there may be some issues where we see homelessness being a larger scale problem than it was five years ago. Housing affordability has changed from even five years ago, so the, the process, the, the outcomes, I don't necessarily see those being different, just the, some of the problems that, that we're experiencing on a, a regional basis, I think, are gonna be a little different.
If I could add a little bit to this, I suspect that this new consolidated plan will also talk about in-kind contributions the city of Lakewood also provides, for example, we are a member of the Pierce County Continuum of Care, the city's been very, you know, been important in sort of reorganizing that body so it works better, thanks to Tiffany Spear, in my opinion, and in addition, there is the 2060, 2163 funds, which I hope we bring up in the discussion of the consolidated plan, because 48% of the money is going to Lakewood and Tacoma, and 52% is going to Pierce County and other Pierce County cities. Of that 48%, most of it, however, is going to Tacoma. So there are other funds that are out there that are being used to try to address regional issues, the other piece is, is that the city of Lake has a very active role in reviewing Pierce County CDBG and HUD programs and grant requests, so we are in this together already to a large extent, and I just wanted to point that out, and I do believe those will be elements that we stick into this revised consolidated plan.
Mr. Simpson.
I've got, this may have been already answered, but I want to make sure I clear my thinking. Do the CDBG funds, do any of those monies go into the line item in our budget, that 1% that we set aside for human services, or are they two separate and distinct budget items?
Two separate line item.
Do they ever cross?
They have not in the past four years, years ago, there was some overlapping with, like, Tillicum Community Center and some other organizations.
Here's the reason I ask the question, during our last budget discussions, I brought up the issue of increasing that 1% that we set aside for human services to something that it came out to about 1.22%, or approximately $87,000. And I seem to recall the conversation at the time drifting toward, we possibly could use CDBG funds to cover that. Now, am I tracking this correctly, and if I am, can that be done with what we've heard this evening?
CDBG funds can be used for public service activities, they're limited to 15% of the allocation, they also have to be new or added services, so if you have a, a service that's gonna provide the same thing next year, CDBG can't fund it, they have to increase their services.
So, as we enter into this next consolidated plan cycle-
That's right.
-it's my expectation that the city council's going to want to bring this up, and my thought is, is that they're probably going to modify the consolidated plan to address this specific issue, if that's the will of the council.
And I, I think you're-
But-
I think you're gonna find in the five-year plan, some of our, some of our consultants see that need.
To answer the deputy mayor's question, I, there had been, I've often thought that as, as we continue to set aside the same amount of money for human services in the city, which is at 1%, which has been fairly static.
Yeah.
And I was thinking that as, as current events evolve, we may be best, well advised to increase that, and I think I had said 1.5%, there was some talk, it was at 1.22 the last-
You didn't have a specific purpose in mind, or did you?
No, no, well, I've given some thought to that, and that was, also leads me back, you said-
But, there's something I need to say here, is if you're going to do that and start putting more money into human services via CDBG-
Yeah.
-it's gotta stay on the CDBG ledger, cannot go over into human services.
I have no, and I think I said at the time I had no problem with that, but what I, what I wanted to clear now, am I thinking it has to be something new, or does it have to be something that is continued?
It has to be a new or increased service.
So if we were to offer homelessness for families with children, that would be new, because I was asked that question several weeks ago, when this guy to my right accosted me in Fort Silicon Park as I was minding my own business doing a Saturday morning workout, and he says, "You should give some thought to what you want that money put for," if I answered your question.
It, it-
Can that be done?
It depends on, yeah, you have to look at, you have to look at the provider level, so it's not just a service, it's who's providing that service, and when are they increasing their services?
Okay.
Kind of like we've done for the 108 loan, we're lawsuit-
That's, that's right, okay.
We're paying them.
Mr. Simpson, this is really important, we have had great difficulty finding providers willing to provide that service at Lakewood, so just as FYI.
Yeah, okay.
The hard, the hard thing is, is-
I appreciate that.
Yeah, the hard thing is, is with, with human services, their, their reporting requirements are, are fairly reasonable, and they're fairly onerous with CDBG, so sometimes trying to get someone to take our funds is, I almost have to track them down and, and make them take them.
Remember what you're saying, helping becomes difficult.
But you did it with Workforce Central.
I actually, yeah, they, they applied, they saw the rules and regulations, and she went, "Holy cow," and she went away, and I called her back later and said, "Hold on, they're not that bad, let me work with you." So it's, yeah, e- even with Workforce Central, they, they were not the happiest with what they were gonna have to do, but they could make it work, and their numbers-
Regarding their journeyman sort of program.
Apprenticeship training program, and, and it's an easier program for her to, to document, they're serving low-income individuals, so they're, she's just documenting household income, so it's not that difficult for them to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take a five-minute personal privilege break here.
That's a big lift on the side of the potential.
Well, yeah, there's a-
Well, yeah, there's a.
That was on those signs. In turn, the church sued based off of the fourteenth and the first amendment. The case was elevated to the Supreme Court and the majority opinion found that the town's ordinance imposed contents-based restrictions on free speech and could not survive strict scrutiny. The ordinance was struck down as unconstitutional. Based on this Supreme Court decision, cities are now amending their codes to remove content-based regulations. Overall, Reed seems to have resulted in sign codes becoming more streamlined. So with this ruling, we can start by looking at what is still subject to regulation. This slide includes a list of physical characteristics that can be regulated, really anything structural or regarding placement, so long as we aren't evaluating what the sign itself says. So you'll notice, for example, the location of the sign, whether it's located in the right-of-way or street poles. As long as those rules and regulations are applied evenly to all signs and are not based off of the content of the sign, then we are able to impose restrictions that within this list.
So Ms. Brunel, this is for the city attorney. As opposed to debating this, I'll just tell you my concern with respect to political science and you can tell me why I shouldn't be concerned at some later date. Assume that we impose a blanket restriction as to time, manner, size, whatever that is content neutral and complies with the Gilbert decision that includes all signs. That's easy. The nineteen ninety-three Collier versus City of Tacoma case was decided based on Article One, Section Five of the Washington State Constitution and noted that political speech in the public forum is favored and there without a compelling state need to which aesthetics and traffic were not compelling state needs. Their limitations on political signs imposed by Tacoma were unconstitutional under the state constitution. So we we could be, my my thought is that we could be confronted with a situation where we impose a blanket regulation of signs that complies with the Gilbert decision and yet are in a position where, under the state constitution, we can enforce that against political signs.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, having lost nine-zero, I'm possibly the worst resource on the Collier case and I will share with you that back at the home office, one of our fellow attorneys suggested moving to reconsider, at which point my co-counsel said, do you think we can get him down to eight-one? So the the court was very clear and obviously the deputy mayor was also involved in that case, although from a far preferable position than mine. But I would I would tell you that the sense that we had going into it was that a blanket ban for some cities might go differently than a blanket ban for Tacoma and I will be very open and frank with you in saying that when Tacoma tried to defend such a ban on the basis of aesthetics, there was kind of a smirk, maybe not the world's most visible smirk, but they they were definitely looking at us with the feeling that we're not Woodinville, we're not Gig Harbor, we're not one of the cute towns and so we really didn't have the same opportunity to take advantage of aesthetics. And the reason that I share that with you is that I think with a different record of not just paying lip service to the kinds of things that might support a ban, if the city actually was investing in certain aesthetic components, for example, a conversation Mr. Buer and I had earlier today was about our gateway program. The city has taken a vested interest in having a really targeted message to people when they come to Lakewood. You're coming to a community that cares about itself, that cares about any way that you wish to enter this city and we don't want a bunch of visual litter in front of our gateways. I think that that might result in at least less of a smirk if we were saying in those areas we were going to ban signs. However, in any instance, the other part of our discussion earlier today was that Collier, one of the critical pieces about that is he was a virtual unknown taking on none other than Norm Dix. And the signs for a candidate are sometimes the cheapest and easiest way to get your message out. And so to the degree that we inhibit the unknown person from their least expensive and possibly most accessible messaging on issues of candidacy, we better have a good record and be able to point to budgetary allocations, articulable programming and things like that if we're going to defend on that basis. So long-winded way of saying, we could try and defend it, but you better be giving us something to work with on it.
Well, it it also presents the dilemma for the council in deciding whether we wish to take on that as an enforcement action. We may have a a uniform, adopt a uniform code, but then make the decision that we don't want to fight that battle with respect to enforcement.
That would be hitting the nail on the head.
Personally, I've always distinguished between the the reason for the first amendment was so that you could stand in the square and say the king's an idiot.
Yes.
And so that is different than commercial speech, although our friends at the Supreme Court making the decision in Gilbert didn't get that deep into it, into the history.
That's true.
All right. Sorry to interrupt.
If there aren't any other.
So your motion for reconsiderations tonight?
So the Planning Commission began their review of the existing sign code in April of last year and they spent six months of two thousand and eighteen reviewing the sign code before recommending approval of the draft in October. Early on, the Planning Commission wanted us staff to increase public engagement and requested that we assemble a task force for public input and I'll go over that more on the next slide. But I want to highlight that the Planning Commission really prioritized simplifying the code as well as coming into compliance with Reed v. Gilbert. So a lot of the strikeouts that we'll review this evening are reorganization and just copies and pastes in an effort to simplify our existing code.
If you were to see a clean copy, I think it would be, you provide greater clarity, which you will see in future iterations of the sign.
So going back to the task force, the community and economic development departments identified key members of the communities and identified them to participate and invited them to participate. In addition, meeting information was posted online to invite anyone interested to participate in the task force. Overall, the city reached out to twenty groups and we had six active participants. However, staff continued to email all twenty identified stakeholders copies of the draft code and meeting information should they choose to comment. The key takeaways was that the group was interested in having less requirements and more self-enforcement. They like feather banners, they're sensitive to the cost of permanent signs and were concerned that limiting the number of or the amount of time that a new business could have a well-maintained banner sign could potentially negatively impact small businesses. With more self-enforcement, the group recommended additional regulations regarding maintenance and this was an agreement that unmaintained signs do not bode well for anyone. And the task force also supported limiting the number of allowed signs based off of frontage and square property or and square footage of a property as opposed to one or the other, like our current code does, since there are some uniquely shaped properties here in the city. So now introducing the draft sign code. Overall, staff in the city's legal team really went through our existing sign code with a fine-tooth comb in an effort to remove all the content-based regulations and references. Through the Planning Commission's review, there was a lot of recommended reformatting and organizing to make the code easier to use for the public. That's what the majority of the strikeouts that you see are. Big changes included removing the exemptions section of the code and the old code attempted to identify and define every sign type down to balloons and assigned provisions to it. The new code more generally defines sign types and specifically explains when a sign permit is required. Rather than requiring that all signs be permitted or specifically exempted as our current code does, the draft code requires only signs visible from the right-of-way have a permit. This automatically exempts small drive-through signs or driveway signs that are confronting the right-of-way, which is one of our design review criteria already in eighteen A. It would also automatically exempt, for example, small nameplates or smaller signs that were previously exempt in the old code or in our existing code. So I want to quickly review each section and highlight the changes. For section one, sign regulations, we added language to emphasize the importance of the first amendment. This seems to be a something that other jurisdictions have done after they've undergone a update following the Reed decision. We've also attempted to expand to answer the why do I need to have a permit question. For section two definitions, we removed the content-based definitions and moved this section from the back of the document to the front in order to align with the future eighteen A proposed format. Section three, administration, we combined the previous administration section and permanent sign code section into one section. And the new administration section kind of clearly outlines the life of a permit. So you'll have when a permit is required, how to apply for one, fees per the fee schedule and the duration and revocation for permit. Next, prohibited signs, we deleted the content-based regulations. Eighteen A fifty-six twenty-five, which was is sign permit exemptions, we removed, recommend to remove because it's largely content-based. And as I mentioned before, exemptions will now be based on if it is visible from the right-of-way. Section five, general provisions, is largely reorganized on pages one hundred and fourteen through one hundred and nineteen of the packet, which is the draft sign code you're going to see a lot of strike through. By and large, those sections were removed and relocated to this same section in a different order or attached to the sign tables. Additionally, we removed billboards and moved them to the non-conforming sign code section eight. Here is also the first mention of sign maintenance, which is new to this code. It can be found on page one hundred and thirteen of the packet and I'm going to paraphrase that essentially it says two things. The first is that all signs shall be maintained in safe condition or you can lose your sign permit. The second is that all signs must be maintained in good condition and then we attempted to define good as torn, damaged, faded, dingy, shredded or battered signs must be removed and or replaced. This new language was something that the task force and the Planning Commission felt needed to be included.
So that would address ghosts signs?
So abandoned signs are identified here. The tricky thing with abandoned signs is that we can't look at a sign to determine, for example, if the date has already passed because that is arguably content-based. But if it was on its side or if it had exceeded the amount of time that the code allows for a temporary sign to be in place, then we could go about removing it. Or if it was in a state of this type of disrepair. I'm not so, I don't think that a a permanent sign would necessarily be abandoned. I think a permanent sign would more so fit into the maintenance category where if we believed, if it was believed that there's a reasonable person standard that we put into the code and so if by a reasonable person standard it was not well-maintained, we could go in and request that they make repairs.
So those are, this probably fall in two easily definable categories. One is where it's not maintained, it's shabby, you have some objective criteria. The other one is where they've taken all the, is it a sign when they take the message off?
There have also been some cases where the building is gone and the sign still remains. Now that, in my mind, is an abandoned sign.
Or the tenants moved out, but the sign is. How is that addressed, if it is?
I don't think that that's so much directly addressed. I would say that torn, damaged, arguably there is a refacing permit required or a structural modification permit required for signs. And in our non-conformant sign section, let's say that they wanted to have a change of use, any non-conforming sign on the property would have to be brought into compliance or removed. So we do make an effort in the code to bring signs that aren't in compliance into compliance and make sure that signs are well-maintained and that's something that's new to this code. Yeah, so abandoned sign and the definition that we have is any sign which is no longer permitted for the timeframe outlined in the non-permanent sign section of this code, no longer standing erect and or may be deemed hazardous or unsafe by the city engineer.
I'm concerned concerned about the aesthetics of signs that if if given a reasonable time to repurpose the sign or the structure that holds the sign, no action takes place and we have either the buildings down, there's a sign there or a sign that no longer has a message on it, those are invariably the ones that are falling into a state of disrepair. We're going to get picky about feather banners and and A A-frame signs and the like. Are we addressing the real big uglies at the same time?
I was just speaking to Mr. Buer that we could potentially abate a big ugly sign as a public nuisance or I I think that as the non-conforming sign code is written for any change of use, new construction, administrative use permit, et cetera, all signs located on the property will have to be brought into compliance. So if it's a big ugly sign that isn't, is too tall, you know, or is not meeting the maintenance standards that we've outlined in the code, it would be required to come into compliance and have a building permit attached to it. So for the provisions for permanent signs or continuous display, we cleaned up the table, but the content is largely the same. This table is is kind of small. But the one thing that we did add is the provision for a pole sign that there in red, that they shall be separated from any other pole sign on the same property by a minimum of two hundred feet. That is the same as the existing regulation we have for monument signs. However, we did not have that regulation for pole sign and have been using an administrative policy to apply the same distance for pole signs as we do monument signs, so this is codifying that.
Okay, so just so I'm in my mind, understanding this, if I've got Lakewood Donor Shop and then subsequent business and subsequent business, but they've decided to use the one pole and just have three business signs on one pole, which we see often. That would be allowed even though it would be three signs on one pole, right? With three businesses that are within two hundred feet?
Yes, and it's actually the poles themselves. Yes, it's it's the poles themselves that have to be separated. So if you if you had enough footage, frontage, to allow for multiple pole signs or you wanted to install an additional pole sign where there's maybe already a lot on the street, we're requiring that all pole signs be separated by two hundred feet.
So we've got, let's say, commercial frontages down gravel lake that are less than two hundred feet, but every business wants a pole sign.
We currently don't allow them under, new ones to go in if they have less than the amount of square footage, which is.
But if one exists, it's grandfathered in, so someone buys in. But if they do a change of use, it was a chicken place, another one making an office or whatever. Retail versus office, change of use. Korean to Japanese. Yeah. It would be a change of use, the business would be a change of use from retail to office, for instance, dental office or whatever.
I believe the answer, that the answer to that is that, yeah, removal required for non-conforming signs in conjunction with any administrative use permit, conditional use permit, variance, subdivision or change of use or building permit application.
Right. Well, I remember it worked quite well because I had a client who was writing about us with regard to a rooftop sign. I said, well, hey, the code says if you make a change of use, it's non-conforming. So is this, oh, so is the standard now the monument sign? I mean, now you say pole signs are now non-conforming. So if I bought something along here and built a new building, let's say, knocked down, but it was a small lot and it's surrounded by the the pole signs because that's pretty much everybody have, it would now be a monument sign, would it not, like most cities have?
Pole signs aren't non-conforming. You can still have it, we're not recommending any change to our existing regulations regarding when a new pole sign can go in. What we are recommending is that pole signs have to have some type of separation between them like we require currently for monument signs. While I was doing research for the the new draft code, I will say that there are some cities that have done away with pole signs in favor of monument signs for a variety of reasons. But I, we didn't incorporate any of those changes that weren't required under Reed v. Gilbert into this, into this code.
How tall can a pole sign be now?
Twenty, or, well, I have the table right in front of me, twenty feet. Twenty feet in height and there is a a regulation for to maintain sight distance, that it has to be, the pole has to be a certain height.
The way this was also previously written, it gave you more sign area if you were proposing to do monument signs. Do we keep that in?
Yes. You can see that the more than fifty square feet, you can have twenty-four feet plus point one seven for each frontage foot over fifty square feet and that's for monument signs. Pole signs, if you have less than two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, you're not allowed to have a pole sign. Two hundred and fifty to five hundred, one in trade for any two permitted monument signs.
So regarding this chart, section of the chart. And previously in the draft that was given to us in the packet, that pole sign had separated from a monument sign by two hundred feet. You know, if a property has a monument sign and a pole sign, now it's worried that they could be.
That's correct, the monument sign. Yeah, my table is incorrect and it was, my table is incorrect, so it should be for monument signs. So the the resolution approved by the Planning Commission was for it to be pole signs separated from any other monument sign on a property by a minimum of two hundred feet. Given, given that a pole sign can only, you can only have up to one pole sign per property. Yes. That is, that's two hundred square feet per sign group. So what we do is we take, let's say, the the building facade of the former G.I. Joe's and we'll take a whole measurement of the G.I. Joe's building facade and use that measurement to determine how much sign face they can have and then we have a maximum of two hundred feet per sign face group. So depending on how big of a facade you have, you can have more or less wall signage.
The other piece there, it says ten percent of facade, nobody puts up a ten percent facade sign. It shoots around seven to eight percent. But that gives you an idea of some of the flexibility that we have provided in the code. We're leaving it alone.
This has not been changed with the exception of what's in red, so the only. No, they do less. So there is a separate chart, I just wanted to highlight the change that we made in this. There is a chart on page. So on page one hundred and twenty-three, that's where we pasted in the new table and freeway, you can have one additional pole sign per freeway frontage as long as you have a minimum of linear feet surface street. And then for wall and windows, you can have a same as non-freeway, commercial and industrial sign code. So that was copied from our existing sign code. And you also see open space, public and institutional, which we're also not proposing any changes to on page one twenty-four. The intent was, some cities have struggled with, for example, the little Visa and like MasterCard emblems that you put in your drive-through window, right, saying that we accept Visa and MasterCard. Some cities have said, how do we define this as signage? And we also struggled with that and said, you can't really see that from the right-of-way. Let's not address it. Let's make this more of an opt-in where if it's clear that you can see it from the right-of-way, then you're going to be required to get a permit. Whereas little nameplates, you know, saying who the doctor is or something on the front of the door. Right, those, those aren't visible. Sorry, what was that?
Entrance and exit.
Right, or directional signs on a property, for example, directing you to a driveway or drive-through, those would be.
If that's the intent, can it be partially addressed by a blanket exemption under a de minimis amount? If a sign is less than one square foot or less or whatever. I mean, it's pretty clear for people then, well, I, well, I can see that Visa sign, maybe I need a permit. If it just says, if they're smaller than X, there's no regulation.
In my experience with sign codes, we're going through seven different iterations of Lakewood alone. Plus other cities that I've worked for that did regulate signs that you could not see from the right-of-way. I've often found that the signs that they were proposing, we never made any changes to anymore. So I I kind of basically agree with what the Planning Commission is saying. These are signs that the public is not going to pay, have paid that much attention to, so let it go. So that's my my perspective as well on this. But we're more curious and what we have the staff for is to monitor and and regulate the standard on signs that you see on the right of way that advertise a basic.
I I just see, being able to say, I can tell there's a sign of some sort there in or I, but 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 being able to actually read it and understand the message on the sign, whatever the message is, okay, there's two different there are some small things that are there, but no one from the right-of-way could. You can see that there is something there, but you can't tell what it is. So I I guess that that maybe it's more a question of maybe the code is okay, but visible if the operating procedures for enforcement, you know, have an understanding there, although it's so. You 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 end up with a.
there, although it's, uh, you, 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 you end up with a. In these, in these particular situations, oftentimes we, we develop administrative policies for de minimis actions, that we say that we're not going to pursue, and that's most likely what we do in this particular case, rather than going through and changing the order.
I know we're jumping a little bit, but since we're talking anecdotal issues, right? Did you have another one? Go ahead. So you, you got the, the strip mall. They've got a pole sign for the strip mall. Everyone's got a door sign for their business, and yet they've got flashy neon signs in the windows, whatever, you know, the sign, your home sign. Not that I've seen any in Lakewood, but you, you kinda wonder how many of those advertising opportunities via signage do they get? There, there are a few of those. And just kind of visual clutter, right? You get that pole sign, you get the business sign, you get the window sign.
So, and under our, under our existing code and the proposed code, this is an issue with enforcement, because we do prohibit, um, blinking and flashing or, flashing our strobe lights, um, those, those types of signage. But right now, we've been advised that we should not be enforcing this code, because it is unenforceable under Reed v. Gilbert. Yes, because much of it is based off of content.
Yeah, okay, I get it. Down the road, once we get this kinda cleaned back, things, we can start making one.
Now, if it's the council's priority for us to enforce more of the signs, then we definitely can using the draft code.
So, what's approved? Practical issue. What do we do if people across the street from each other decide, one puts up a sign that says, "Make America Great Again," and the other one puts up a sign that says, "Impeach Trump," and they both complain about each other?
They can't do anything.
That must be political speech, we would leave it alone.
It would be content-based furthermore, so we would leave it alone.
But their complaint isn't gonna be comment-based. They're gonna say, "That doesn't comply with your sign code."
There was what, sorry?
They're gonna say, "That doesn't comply with your sign code." Their motivation is political, but the complainant can say.
Well, the sign code doesn't have any regulation.
I don't want, that's an extra sign I don't want in my neighborhood.
Yeah, the, the sign code doesn't have any restrictions for any content on a sign. So we've, we've redefined our signs into types that are so general and so broad, that you could put whatever you want, and that's really the risk, is that people could put any.
Wouldn't there be a duration on it, if it's political?
It depends, it depends on the type. So if we called it a temporary sign, then yes, it would have a duration of up to a hundred and twenty days, but all properties have options to install permanent signs, which are needed for, um, if you're going to sell your house, for example, which I'll use as a scenario here in a minute, but.
We had one situation, one neighborhood where one person put up signs saying that his neighbor was a bad person, and started using very offensive racial slurs. And the neighborhood was in an uproar.
Yeah.
In that particular case, it was free speech. Was it offensive? Yes.
Are they still there?
Yes, that's on, that's on Nixon, and yes, those signs are still.
And so, and so we have these examples, right? Where people can kind of run amok, if you will, with the types of language that they wanna have on their signs. But with what we're proposing in the code, we're limiting them to the number of signs that they can have on display at any given time. Which I'm gonna jump ahead. Finding sign points, yes. Um, so for, so this section is entirely new, and this is our provisions for non-permanent signs, formerly known as temporary signs. So I think that it's important to bring this into our conversation, 'cause they really go together. So, um, there are three new sign types that are based on size, shape, and duration of a sign and not on content. We created this new table, which is similar to the permanent sign, um, code section. The three new sign types are limited duration, temporary, and large banner signs, which are only permitted in open space, public, and institutional zones. And I'll go over this table in a minute in a little bit more detail. But focusing for now on the residential and non-residential zones, we have the three, um, limited duration signs, temporary signs, and portable signs. Portable signs are currently allowed in our existing code, but we have, um, special regulations regarding where they can be placed. Currently, portable signs are meant to be attached to a business in the existing code. And at the time that the resolution was passed by Planning Commission, they wanted to continue that and not have these portable signs in residential zones. However, after the meeting, um, we were able, the staff was able to meet with the Realtors' Association, who were unable to join us for the task force, but were able to give us comments after. And they explained the importance of possibly allowing portable signs, seeing that portable signs are the only sign type that is allowed in the right-of-way. Because the, and they're only allowed in the right-of-way between six and ten, um, six AM to ten PM daily and meant to be removed. And these would be sandwich board or A-frame signs, or they could possibly be, you know, your stake signs. What we're attempting to do is say, the, the, by using these examples, you can, you can go beyond these examples in all practical purposes, but these are examples of what might be, might fit into these different sign categories. So staff would recommend, after those conversations, that portable signs, we, we have one allowed per residential property in order to support, um, homes for sale for open houses. And the way that that would work, for example, let's say the Oakbrook neighborhood, which would be some, somewhat confusing to navigate, we could have an open house sign in front of a property on the corner. There could be another open house sign down the block in front of that property, but you would only have one of these types of portable signs in front of a property at a time. So that kind of prevents there from being a sign buildup, if you will, in certain areas.
But in the right-of-way, those A-frame directional signs for the Realtors.
So they would be able to be located in the right-of-way so long as they're not placed in an unsafe manner, which is outlined in the code, that you can't place it in a way that would impede your traffic. And they, there has to be a sidewalk clearance of thirty-six inches, which is for ADA.
So, this is, this is one, one council member's opinion, because I don't know how to dance around the opinion. Uh, in addressing the placement of political signs, University Place, uh, I think by code or just determined in their mind that the, 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 uh, traffic circles were not traditional public forum, because it couldn't be traditionally University Place, 'cause they just created them. So that was their argument. I, I don't necessarily buy that. But based on aesthetics and uniform application, is there any merit to saying that, uh, we can't place any temporary sign in front of the gateway?
So.
Uh, so that we have those, keep those islands clutter flight-free. Uh, that's personally my greatest, I, I don't really care if there's a sign on the side of the road that says, you know, "We're selling a house down there," or "There's an open house down there," but when there are ten of them in front of the gateway, kind of, it, it kind of defeats the purpose of having a uniform, neat entrance.
So, um, I did have an opportunity to speak to our city engineer today regarding the different roundabouts and traff-, and traffic islands. And in his opinion, that's all included in the right-of-way, which our current code does also prohibit signs in the right-of-way, but we haven't been enforcing it. The new code also prohibits signs in the right-of-way, and it's, it's for more than just aesthetics, it's also a concern with utilities. Utilities are found in the right-of-way, and if somebody installs a sign and, you know, impacts the utilities, um, as well as sight distance. And so there's more than just the aesthetics to allow for us to not allow signs in the right-of-way. Cities have approached this, though, in a couple of different ways. Um, University Place has banned signs in the right-of-way unless express permission is given from the city engineer, which is what we're proposing. Other cities, for example, Gig Harbor, they allow temporary signs in certain pockets of the city in the right-of-way, and they're, they're permitted and nowhere else.
It's a little out of construction.
Yeah, and so there's, there's different, um, there's different ways to approach it, but other cities have definitely approved and, and moved forward with prohibiting signs in the right-of-way and are enforcing it.
Mr. Branstad, be funny, except it's true.
What I think is that when you say that you can't put any temporary sign in the right-of-way, and you blanketly say that, like that, that becomes unenforceable. That it is, it is better to identify certain types of right-of-ways, such as the interior of traffic circles and roundabouts, traffic islands, the center, the center strips in boulevards, such as in front of Silvercar Technical College along One Hundred Street, like we're planning to put on Washington Boulevard to be able to go and do that. You know, where there's, you know, and all right-of-ways aren't totally equal, and I think that there are some of them that we could call out, saying, right-of-ways of this type, which would include the runs at, at, at gateless, um, to be able to go and do that. That becomes much more enforceable than a broad ban on everywhere in the city, you can't put anything in a right-of-way, because you can't keep up with that, and, uh, it's, the safety, visibility, aesthetic, uh, versions are different in different places.
Yeah, and to, to Mr. Branstad's point, we also have a situation in many places where we're using thirty feet of the right-of-way. The right-of-way is really sixty feet.
Mm-hmm.
So that doesn't mean that you're viol-, you're violating it if you don't have your otherwise permitted sign at least fifteen feet back from the edge of the pavement or, or the edge of the, or, or the edge of the shoulder.
If we were to enforce this as written strictly, then yes, it would mean that.
I would point out that this goes back to something Ms. Walker said. Uh, you can strengthen your position prohibiting these types of signs by referencing the city's gateway, which is where you have your large prominent signs, often on islands, not already because you've made a significant investment in those signs. You've also installed a significant amount of landscaping, and people placing those, those signs in the landscaped area could be a problem. It's well documented in our city policies, and some, but not all of the gateway sites have significant infrastructure in the ground.
Right.
One that comes to my mind is on Bridgeport Way across from Walmart. The other thing I would point out is this from a traffic safety perspective, many of the islands and gateways are in very, very heavily traveled areas, which would seem to justify traffic safety and safety hazard rationale. So, so those, those are some very strong criteria to prohibit those signs on, on the gateways in particular, but also on, on the islands.
You could identify those pretty specifically. And so we could still have a fairly broad prohibition, but call those out with specificity and.
For example, if you'll take, or if you'll recall, there is a sign in the right-of-way, approved by the city, allowing, uh, showing the direction to the Oakbrook Off-Course.
It would be grandfathered in.
And you still can't find it.
I would, um, I would, I would like to emphasize, though, just kind of reciting what I've spoken to the city attorney about, that if, if we open up the public right-of-way to different sign types in different areas, then we're opening it up to all different types of signs in those areas. So it's difficult to limit once it's open, um, that, just something to consider.
I'm talking about in addition, prohibition in addition too.
Right.
So it's easily.
Prohibition in addition.
I would like to clarify one of the things that's being said, um, in terms of a blanket prohibition and all signs and this sort of thing. When you look at Reed versus Gilbert, it's the messaging that's the issue. So for example, if you chose to put only temporary A-frames during certain hours in the rights-of-way, but no other types of signs, no wire, um, propped-up signs or particularly flimsy signs, if you describe them purely from the position of what they're made of, I think that you can do that under Reed. What you can't do is say, a for-rent sign is acceptable, but temporary, uh, signs advertising church bazaars or advertising, uh, temporary sales are not. You can't get at the content, but you can get at what the sign is made out of, what size it is, uh, colors, those types of things that are not message-based.
I mean, it's really interesting, because what, what do we do with all the political signs from these campaign seasons are all over the right-of-way? I'd like to keep them out of the gateways, but precluding them from all public right-of-ways is really difficult to enforce. I don't know. I guess we could if we go out there.
Well, you wrote the decision.
Well, Collier, a little different, 'cause I knew that Heidi was there, I wanted to make sure that.
In the right-of-ways, it's easier to say when you can.
Right.
But then there are certain places where there can be nothing.
Yeah. Regardless of content size, material, just should be nothing, like in the gateways.
Or the, because political signs are overwhelming, you could open up a permit-free period for a limited period of time.
We used to have that, didn't we? Didn't we have it so many days prior and somebody's after?
And that's what Collier, Collier eliminated.
I know, because of the content. Yeah.
So you wouldn't say it's content-based. I mean, I'm just not suggesting it, but just.
But there are also, uh, individuals running for office who are smart about it.
Yeah.
You know, they would put up the signs when the, the season was upon them, and then if they won the election, that part of it, they would take them down for a couple of months and then put them back up for the general election.
Right.
That was a very wise move. Those, you know, those who were astute, uh, will follow that practice.
But we can't do that anyway, though.
Now that they're in the primary or there.
Yeah.
Your task force, your slide said, liked feather banners. But feather banner doesn't appear anywhere in your charts. There, there's banners, but I don't know if that meant, you meant that to mean, I, I don't know. I understood banners to be more like ribbons and things. So, so did you intentionally, didn't include any authorization for feathers?
No, that, so under, these are meant to be general examples. So feather banners could, in theory, be either limited duration or temporary signs. Um, they're, the maximum height allowed for those, especially in commercial zones, of eight feet is the standard feather banner height. So they could have feather banners. We're just limiting the total number that they would be able to have, based off of the size of their property. So when we.
On your chart, are you saying there was this freestanding sign that could be a feather banner?
Sure, or, or banner sign. This is meant to be an example, and this was something that the Planning Commission encouraged that we incorporate, so people kind of had an idea. But from a planner's perspective, when we receive an application or when we're out doing enforcement action, what we're gonna look at is, how many signs does this property already have? What's the sign size? What's the height? And then if a permit is or isn't required. We're not going to look at whether or not it's a freestanding window, wall, or banner. That's just an example of the type of sign that could fit in that. It's up to the individual property owner to decide what type of sign they want to have in that category.
I understood that the task force was focused on business, but there is a significant difference in opinion about feather banner between business people and many of residents in the city. I mean, there, that's the, and there, there's, there's that tension over A-frame signs and other kinds of signs, too, to be able to go and do that. But that is a, if we, if we chose, in, in the previous code, we made feather banners were a temporary sign that had to do with the first ninety days or something that businesses were operating. And you can't do that, and that was an intent to.
Draw attention.
Not, not, not for them to just be planted and be there, you know, for, for, forever to be able to go and do that. Now, during the period of time that we've not been enforcing the sign code, you know, there are lots of permanent, semi-permanent feather banners that are grown up and are widely considered to be the worst clutter of all the park.
That and twelve-feet-high gorillas, but I think it's fifteen.
Fifteen.
So, you know, so, so rather just by allowing feather banners, by not mentioning them, by, or saying that there's something else, you know, I, I think we should either.
Ban them.
Well, we should. They are a unique, specific type of sign. and we should either make a decision in the code, yes, you can have a sign of active structure, or, 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 or no, you can't, or there are only certain zoning districts that it's allowed in.
Where would they fit typically? Would they be a limited duration sign, temporary sign, or...
I think that they would fit best as either a limited, well, they would fit as a limited duration or a temporary sign. If they were a limited duration, then they could be possibly in place for a year, in perpetuity, really. They'd be required to be renewed every year and in doing so, we could make sure that they were in good condition. However, if they wanted multiple outside of what they would be allowed based off of the size of their property under the limited duration sign section, then they could also have a temporary one, um, which would get them up to four, depending, for really large properties here in the city. But those temporary signs can only be displayed in this draft up to a maximum of a hundred and twenty days per year.
It's quite a bit though.
Could I?
Yes.
I'm just curious, since you bring up the subject of, of these banner, feather signs. Is there any sense that we would like to ban those things? Because I'm going to come right out and say it. I think we should ban them.
I think we have.
I think they're an eyesore. They may, they remain in perpetuity. I was, as Mike was talking, I was just going through the city thing. I know exactly where they are. I know, they've been, some of those have been there for almost a year. And then we get to the thing about enforcement. So why don't we make it just a little easier and fairer to everybody? You can advertise, you just can't use that kind of advertising.
We, we ban them, but you see them everywhere and probably in other cities that don't ban them. I mean, they're very popular for whatever reason, and I'm not sure why it is. They're inexpensive.
Cheap, they're cheap, they're a lot cheaper than any other city.
If we were to move forward with the ban, um, we would include that in the prohibited sign section, which is on page one hundred and nine. We, we don't currently ban, um, we have interpreted animated, emitted, moving, rotating, or visually protect, projected signs at different times, I believe, to be feather banners. But there are many that are...
Yeah.
Currently out there.
I would, I would be supportive of not allowing feather banners.
So I think that with the way that the code is drafted, if we were to specifically prohibit feather banners in one section of the code, we could still keep this and say, you know, despite, you have different options for how you can have a limited duration or temporary sign, but under no means are you able to have a feather banner. That's clearly prohibited.
Mr. Mayor, we are not required to make the decisions.
Okay.
This will be something that will come back at a later meeting for further discussion.
Yeah, I, I just, my understanding coming into this was that our present code and see it on one ten here, maybe it's somewhere else. Under prohibited signs, posters, pennants, banners, streamers, string pennants, blinking or flashing, there's strobe lights, searchlight strings, blah, blah, blah. Uh, except as permitted in conjunction with a temporary sign for, we're prohibited. And so the people who have permanent or semi-permanent feather banners up are in violation of the sign code as it currently exists. We'd gone out and issued, people were getting citations for it. We, we were, we were citing people for it.
I don't dispute that's where you would place it for a prohibited sign.
I, I think we'd add feather banners specifically.
Well, that's a different issue. But I mean, historically, we were operating as if...
That's correct.
Feather banners as a permanent feature were not permitted. And so it isn't a significant change to move to banning them. So I guess my point.
Yeah, I see your point. And I don't, may I? I don't disagree with what the mayor is saying and in, in some ways I'm, I'm not, I'm not particularly happy with the fact that I had to say what I said earlier. What seems to me that happens is, and I'm, I'm sort of paraphrasing here, that while, when we're in the economic arena, I've noticed that some businesses, or basically I can understand why a business, will use anything and everything at their advantage or to their advantage to bring business to their store. I don't have a problem with that to a point. And I realize that I'm talking more personal bias here than something that I can nail down with empirical data. But it seems to me that when a feather banner's been there for damn near a year, I'm starting to think, no, you're taking advantage of the situation here and that's what I want to prohibit. But then you get to the, how do you stop this from happening if we allow these feather banners? And that gets us into the enforcement. And it seems to me, from my understanding of the city's history, that's a sticky wicket we don't want to go through. So just simply ban them from the start and solve the problem before it becomes a problem. Makes the job a bit easier to manage what we see visually in the right of way.
What did the chamber say?
The chamber, I don't recall commenting specifically on feather banners. Um, the folks that did comment on feather banners were the ownership from Classy Chassis, the sign code companies, and Lynn Larson, who was a developer. They all commented in favor of feather banners.
Yeah, that makes sense.
For grand openings.
Correct.
You could still do the temporary banners, et cetera, as a part of a grand opening arrangement under the proposed code, yes. But if the council wishes to say no to feather banners, we can include that as a prohibited sign, I believe.
And I'm not sure, Dave, if we could associate it directly with a grand opening or if that would be based off of the content. Yeah, so it would be just fit into this. They would use, they would use their option.
We would not use the term grand opening.
Oh, there's a content.
So moving, um, on to open space, public and institutional, same basic sign types, um, including large banner signs. And we have discussed a little bit the possibility of amending the, um, the rest of the tables to reflect certain times of the year, perhaps, that we allowed signs to be undisplayed. We are proposing, and the resolution, um, was in support of temporary signs being permitted in these zones only in certain times of the year. So we have already looked at that in other sections of the code and can look at that for the rest of the zones as well.
That's for advertising things like summer class.
Or the farmer's market. So we, we put special consideration into making sure that the farmer's market was outlined. Um, and we've also spoken with the school district because, as you know, the public institutional zones includes all of our public institutional uses.
Ms. Moss.
We have had requests for that, but we do not currently have a program in place for other entities. We recommend that they reach out to the school district. Under this, they would be able to have a fence sign as a temporary sign, one per establishment. And they could also have a large limited duration sign, up to two, depending on the size of the property.
In the past, they used that fence to advertise E-CAP programs as well as temporary bus drivers.
There it is. This is Thousand Oaks, California.
So our last, um, section is the non-conforming sign section, which now includes billboards. And we've removed the outdated regulations. There were lots of references to two thousand and six. For our next steps, there's a public hearing scheduled on March eighteenth. Um, and then following that, we'll have continued city council review and eventual adoption. Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Brandstetter.
Starting a public hearing a week from today. What is going to be in the public domain for the public to come in?
The resolution that was approved by the Planning Commission. And we already issued those notices.
So we're going to, so the public is got access to the resolution from the Planning Commission?
Yes, it was posted online.
On our new website, how do you find that?
It's in the agenda, um, it's in the agenda bills section for tonight's council meeting. And then I, I'm not sure exactly where on the new website. I couldn't follow up with you tomorrow though and...
Well, I'm saying we're, we've already put a notice out of this public hearing. I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm sort of wondering what do we expect people to come here a week from now, having looked at? I know that the, the real estate people have looked at it. But I, I'm not, it seems, um, this is one of those things that we're going to get a lot of public coming after the fact. If we don't put something out with enough time to be suggested and even if we can't allow enough time for this comments to come back to us. I'm worried that we're on a path, a timeline to get almost no comment a week from now.
I would, I would agree with Mr. Brandstetter. There's the requirements for a notice for a public hearing and there's transparency. And, uh, bearing it on our website isn't necessarily transparent, especially to the real estate or the, uh, Chamber of Commerce communities, which I think we should go out of our way. I don't, I'm not opining on the period, period of time, but at least they should get separate notice to bring it to their attention as opposed to, uh, and then like, yeah, my, I'm, I'm not concerned with having to make a hard vote. If I, if my opinion as a council member is that certain things should be limited, but I think that people need to be heard or we're going to be right where Mr. Brandstetter suggests is that we'll pass something and they'll be here en masse saying you blindsided us and we couldn't find that. How are we supposed to know?
Could advertise it on a feather banner around the city hall.
Yeah. A temporary sign with a permit.
All the way down Dravil Lake.
How much? Two hundred and fifty political signs?
Yeah, just nail them right in their own dome.
So, I mean, it's okay bumping out a little longer, right?
Yes, it's, it's all at the discretion of the, of the city council. We've already gone ahead and scheduled the public hearings, so we're scheduled for the eighteenth. But we can certainly do additional public outreach and you can continue the public hearing beyond the eighteenth to give your time, uh, give the public an additional opportunity for comment. And when you're ready to close the public hearing, you let us know and then you can, can come back and debate this. So it's up to you, but the eighteenth is just the starting point.
Yeah, and it's, this, you know, I, I tend to have a short memory sometime, but I do remember it, at the time of incorporation when the, uh, the volunteer enforcement people were here to, to, as the sign Nazis and alienated just about everybody. That, uh, it did not go well. Ms. Barth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would strongly suggest that the Chamber of Commerce, the Realtor Association, be specifically...
They've all already been notified, so everyone that was identified in...
Realtors did.
Mm-hmm, and, and so was the chamber, so they were actually involved in the, the task force. And last week, when we sent out the main public notice, I notified all of those twenty stakeholders that we had identified, which included the chamber, um, of the public hearing in this meeting tonight.
Well, that's my main concern.
We'll go ahead and get back to that twenty and let them know where the code is on the new website so that if they want to take a look at it, they can.
Sounds good. Lot of work. Thank you guys.
Yeah, thanks. Always difficult, especially when the courts get involved. That's what keeps Mr. Whalen in business.
Exactly. Thirty's never simple.
So we get to a Vision 2050 update. That would be ninety-seven years old.
Twenty fifty?
It will be just about sixty-five.
It's stacked containers next to the train station. Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Tiffany Spear, uh, from Community and Economic Development, Special Projects. So we're talking about Vision 2050 tonight, not because we're asking the council to take any specific action, but simply to bring you up to speed on what the Puget Sound Regional Council has issued as a supplemental environmental impact statement and the fact that the actual draft plan is scheduled to come out this summer. Uh, the PowerPoint that I included in the packet for this evening is quite lengthy and we can certainly touch high points or we can go into more detail. But I'm going to proceed, um, somewhat speedily, but if I get going too fast, please stop me. But I have a feeling that the speed will be appreciated.
This will be coming back to the city council and prepare our draft comments on the EIS. So you'll have more opportunity to enter into detail at that point. So I would hope that we go through this in a speedy process.
I would hope that we get into the detail at that point.
Yes. Okay. So, um, just a graphic to begin the conversation. As the council is well aware, I'm sure, you have enabling legislation from the state legislature and then there's agency regulation at that level. Then there are regional policies and in Pierce County's case and City Lakewood's case, some of those policies stem from the Puget Sound Regional Council. And that is a, a body that governs through these policies Pierce, King, Snohomish and Kitsap counties. Those policies inform and, um, direct to some extent the comprehensive plan and the zoning map for the city of Lakewood. And then the land use and development codes for the city also follow that comp plan and zoning map. And it is the Puget Sound Regional Council at that regional level. Uh, looking below that, you'll see Pierce County's Regional Council and then the city of Lakewood itself. So the PSRC, just to step back a moment, what is it and why is it around? It is both a federally designated and a state designated organization. It's called a metropolitan planning organization under federal law and it is required for transportation planning. Under state law, it's called a regional transportation planning organization. It's a very similar definition, but it is recognized in the state as well as the federal levels. There was an interlocal agreement that created the PSRC back in nineteen ninety-three. And what you'll see is as far back as then, there was the anticipation that PSRC would both handle and deal with regional transportation questions, but also regional growth management. So that's been there since ninety-three. However, I will note that in blue text on this slide for you, it's supposed to be based on local comprehensive plans. And there would be some argument, um, in some cases by the city Lakewood, I believe, that that's where the agency has started to go a little bit off track. But they were anticipated from the beginning to deal with growth management. Under the bylaws, which are last updated, I believe in two thousand and nine, they are still operating per that interlocal agreement. And then they are also looking at eligible agencies for the transportation projects. So looking again at a graphic, sometimes this helps rather than just text. There are committees, policy boards, and then the general assembly. And starting at the bottom, you'll see not only, um, elected officials participating in various committees at PSRC, but there's also one called Regional Staff Committee. And then there's others that are, um, technical advisors, et cetera. And so on the left-hand side of that pyramid, you'll see council members Bokey and Whalen are alternates. Bokey to the, um, Transportation Policy Board and then council member Whalen to the Economic Development District Board. And then I am serving on the Regional Staff Committee as an alternate.
So, uh, as of about five o'clock today, I am the newest member of the Transportation Policy Board, replacing Ryan Mello as the Pierce Transit Rep.
Okay. Thank you.
I was fallen told.
So these committees make recommendations up to the... So these committees make recommendations up to the policy board level. And then those policy boards in turn make recommendations to the General Assembly, which meets annually. All of the committees and boards meet on a monthly basis. So Vision 2040 has three pieces to it. And it was adopted back in two thousand eight. And the reason it's called Vision 2040 is it is a planning horizon of thirty years. So the intent was to cover the timeframe from two thousand ten to two thousand forty. And within it, there are environmental discussions, there's a regional growth strategy, and then there's multi-county planning policies. The regional economic strategy is something that was just updated two years ago or about a year and a half ago. It's called Amazing Place. And then there's also a regional transportation plan, which was last updated almost a year ago. So those are the three big pieces that PSRC deals with, regulates, certifies through, in addition to strictly looking at transportation projects. Within Vision 2040, you'll see the following items are covered and discussed. Natural environment, growth, balance of jobs and housing, looking at urban centers, health, affordable housing, mobility, transportation, economy, and then public services, generally speaking. Within the Vision 2040 document, there are a number of various criteria or categories used for different jurisdictions. You'll see down at the bottom with that red arrow, City of Lakewood, there is a yellow or a core city. And then within Lakewood, there is a blue dot for a regional growth center. Core cities are key hubs there. I'll just quote very quickly, dealing with multimodal transportation, civic cultural employment centers, and major growth for a particular county is supposed to be targeted toward core cities. The blue dot is the regional growth center, which as of last fall is the same boundaries as the downtown subarea plan. It's priority for accommodating growth. It's promoting housing opportunities close to employment. And then dealing with multimodal transportation, reducing congestion because of walkability near both jobs and housing, and then maximizing benefit of public investment. So jumping to 2050, as you can anticipate, 2050 is simply taking the 2040 document and extending its planning horizon another ten years. So it is intended to cover the years twenty fifty through, I'm sorry, twenty twenty through twenty fifty. And on the bottom there, you'll see just a very general timeline. Where we're at right now is that SEPA review and a draft plan. And then it is intended to be adopted next May at the two thousand twenty General Assembly. So when the, last fall and last summer, the scoping began for Vision 2050, Lakewood and a number of other jurisdictions requested that rather than just picking up Vision 2040 as a starting point, the PSRC take a step back from that document and really look at what's happened in recent years, what the status quo is in terms of jobs and housing and, and transportation, and how that is all functioning either well or not well within the region. And being critical of the, the pattern that has been forming particularly in the last decade of jobs are going to, to King County and the other three counties are becoming bedroom communities almost for that, which exacerbates the congestion along I-5 in particular, but other transportation corridors as well. This was a minority opinion and ultimately PSRC has taken the position of using Vision 2040 as the starting point. So that's going to be the basis for the environmental impact statement. And as we move forward, looking at various alternatives, Vision 2040 is going to be where you begin from and then you look at alternatives from that. So with, very quickly, there's going to be a couple of statutory changes addressed within the update, including, some of you may have followed the conversation with Bethel School District in Pierce County about being allowed to cite schools in the rural area if a majority of their students are from the rural area. Looking at outdated demographics or statistics or, or that type of fact checking. And then there's incorporating those regional plans, which have been adopted or updated since Vision 2040. So the Open Space Conservation Plan, the Transportation Plan, the Regional Economic Strategy. One good thing that is happening, and I know Lakewood's been involved from the start, is PSRC will now be recognizing military installations as a geography, whereas before they did not. Not a center, it's being called a geography. One of the other things that's really become a hot topic up at PSRC is the term social equity. And I've tried to pull from a couple of different, different sources what that term is being used to mean. So dealing with marginalized communities, their challenge to meet housing and jobs and economic and cultural needs. And then looking at equity from health to displacement and services throughout both urban and, and urban unincorporated areas. So that is something that's going to be a thread throughout the Vision 2050 update.
There's been a lot of discussion exactly what does social equity mean. And we won't go into that tonight, but that's been a bit of a hot button issue. And you'll see a little bit more of this as Tiffany gets into her presentation.
The additional priority issues are regional growth. And that is the basis really of the environmental impact statement that's out right now for a review. Dealing with housing choice and affordability and how that's going to be dealt with. Meaning is it going to be a local issue or is it going to become a regional or even a state level issue to handle? Looking at the natural environment. And then shared prosperity across the region is really focusing on the question of whether economic development's patterns over the last decade should continue or if we need to be looking at a different way to try to guide economic development throughout the four-county region. So within the Vision 2050 document, you will see some changes to regional geographies. Although for Lakewood, to cut it all short, it continues to be called a core city and it continues to have a regional growth center. But there are some other changes to definitions and things being called small and larger city now, small and larger cities, rather than some of the prior names. And then you will see down on the bottom now, you do have JBLM recognized as a geography. And that means that population and jobs related and transportation related to that geography are going to start to be taken into account. So here's what's going on with the supplemental environmental impact statement. There were a number of alternatives that were debated and honed down to these three. And so as of last Friday, when the SEIS was issued, these were the three included. Stay the course, which means keep going as Vision 2040 has had the policies direct since two thousand eight. Transit-focused growth, which is dealing with moving more growth density and planned growth into the areas where there is high-capacity transit. And then the third is called reset urban growth. And this is looking at a more distributed growth of both jobs and housing throughout the entire urban growth area of the region. So very quickly, the no action, as I mentioned, is just a continuation of Vision 2040. That doesn't work on there. And then what that does is take the largest and most transit-connected cities to take most of the growth. Transit-focused growth takes that even further. So seventy, excuse me, seventy-five percent of the region's population and employment growth is supposed to happen under this policy or this alternative within a quarter to half mile of the high-capacity transit station areas. So this would take probably more growth into metropolitan and core cities in particular. But obviously, as you can see within that quarter to half mile, that's quite a change in development patterns for some of these jurisdictions within the PSRC geography. The third alternative is the resetting urban growth. And this assumes both jobs and housing going out in a, in a slightly more equal-numbered way, if that's a nice phrase to use. So you've got more growth going into the urban unincorporated areas as well as cities and towns, not just the metropolitan and core cities. So this is a very quick numerical comparison between those three. And I'll just direct you to core cities because that's what City of Lakewood is. In the second row there, you'll see core cities under stay the course. That's saying twenty-eight percent of the next, of the growth in the next thirty years would go into core cities, including Lakewood for Pierce County. And the other core city in Pierce County FYI is Puyallup. The metropolitan city here is Tacoma. In transit-focused growth, that number jumps by one percent to twenty-nine percent for core cities. And then in the reset urban growth, it actually drops by three percent compared to stay the course. Down there in jobs, same idea. You see thirty-six percent under stay the course, thirty-five percent for core cities. So actually less jobs under transit focus. And then an even smaller number under reset urban growth.
These are marginal changes in percentage of public growth.
This is similar numbers, but depicted graphically. So you'll see, for instance, on the population growth, light green is urban unincorporated. So in our case, unincorporated area for Pierce County. And if you compare stay the course to reset urban growth, that's probably the biggest difference among all of these numbers. It's a five percent planned for growth within that area. But if you jump over to reset urban growth, that's more than twice as much as going to that area of unincorporated Pierce County in our case, under reset urban growth. The other change there between transit-focused and reset, or, excuse me, reset urban growth is under the high-capacity transit communities. So you'll see twenty-three percent goes to those communities versus eighteen percent under eight, reset urban growth. And it's also eighteen percent under stay the course. So all of the cities feel some change, some more than others. And then employment growth, it's a somewhat similar story. One of the things that's happened though, as, as the conversation has been held in various policy boards, is at the beginning, everyone said, well, there's these three alternatives, stay the course, transit-focused and reset urban growth. What if we picked, and, and the assumption was that if you did stay the course, for instance, for housing or for population, you would also automatically do stay the course for employment growth. What people are now starting to talk about is, well, maybe we do stay the course for jobs, but reset urban growth for housing or something like that, where they're not necessarily both alternatives are exactly the same choice. So I'm not going to go through all of this, but Vision 2050 really does talk a lot about housing. And what you will see there right under the first bullet point is that the discussion has become, and there's a lot of momentum behind this, to take housing from a local government governed item to more of a regional issue. And there is proposed housing strategies and housing actions that are being drafted now for inclusion in the plan itself. So that's just something to watch and see how the city may want to react to that once the draft plan is out. And there's also discussion about the regional housing strategy, looking to maybe publicly intervene. And that translates into, in some cases, inclusionary zoning mandated or recommended or looking for additional subsidies that might be available from the state level or federal level. Again, more housing. So that's going to be a big conversation item come this summer and fall. And the economy, updating it to reflect those changes that I mentioned before in the regional economic strategy. For public services, again, the schools, but then also looking at better communication and coordination between school districts and cities and counties. So as plans from either side affect the other, there's knowledge of that ahead of time. Transit-oriented development, this here, again, you'll see that idea of encouraging or requiring inclusionary or incentive zoning. So long story short, that is requiring in a market-based housing development of whether it's single-family or multi, saying some of those, some percentage of what you are building developer are going to have to be below market rate for some amount of time. And sometimes that's a permanent thing, sometimes it's for a certain amount of time. And then you get into other various ifs, ands or buts with that program, depending on how it's drafted by each jurisdiction. Centers, the centers update occurred over the last few years. And one of the main things that Lakewood was watching was whether military installations were going to be recognized and included. And as a result of that work on the centers, yes, they are going to be a geography in Vision 2050. The environmental chapter, there is a chapter in, in Vision 2040 and 50 about environment. And where this may be one to watch is things like tree canopy, stormwater pollution, looking at access to parks, trails and open space. So those items, again, how they're going to translate into things affecting the City of Lakewood's planning and capital programs. Transportation, really looking at that last year's transportation plan and incorporating it to be consistent in 2050. Just a minor point that actually is going in the city's favor. This is an slide that talks about the rate of annexation in various jurisdictions over time. And as you can see, in Snohomish and King are where most of the annexations occurred with that turquoise color in two thousand six to two thousand eleven. King County had the most and that in primary part is because they were provided with state financial incentives, i.e. tax credits for periods of time for cities that annexed unincorporated King County areas. None of the other counties received that. And as time has gone by, Pierce County actually tried a couple of years ago, I don't know if they're still pushing for it, to have that incentive be brought back. It hasn't happened yet. But the reason King County was able to succeed with so much annexation, which is something Growth Management Act is, is encouraging or even mandating in some cases, is because they had the money from the state to do so. And actually, what's happening now is the, the honeymoon period, if you will, for the cities who received those breaks are about to expire. And now we're going to truth test whether those cities can really handle the additional geographic area that they've had to annex. Development patterns, this is looking at changes that PSRC is talking about where the, the regional agency would actually start communicating along with cities about annexation to the state. So if there's information that Lakewood or anybody else wanted to provide to PSRC, they would become an ally in the conversation about how to make annexation more feasible for jurisdictions. Health is another one that's going to be a hot topic in addition to housing in Vision 2050. Health is being seen as more than just your medical health and going to the doctor once or twice a year. It's talking about how land use planning, transportation, your economic tax bracket that you're in, all of that is affected by and affects your health. And so looking at how to incorporate health in all policies, as you see there by the bottom, on the bottom. That is going to be something that's discussed in much more detail as we get the draft plan out. So where it sits, the SEIS, as I mentioned, has been issued and it is open for public review and comment between now and April twenty-ninth. There was a push at first to have a thirty-day comment period, but that was actually extended to a sixty-one day based on the request by incoming President, County Executive Damier. And so we're going to anticipate putting in some comments and then be ready in summer for a second round of comments on the plan itself. There are several open houses about the environmental impact statement coming up. So actually this week, this Wednesday, there'll be one in Tacoma. And then Thursday, March twenty-first will be the final one at PSRC itself. So for the council, and I know we're at a late hour, but the idea tonight was to ask, are there specific things in the SEIS that you may wish to do or cover as a topic?
Can I use a match?
Yeah, it would extend this meeting too long to give my opinion as to what we should object to.
All right. Then my only other...
And I guess it starts with the fact that Seattle, one of the least diverse major cities in the United States, who's been so successful raising taxes to the maximum level and screwing up every program that they've implemented, is trying to tell us what to do.
May I add something to that?
Yeah.
I can say shorter. I've heard said in this, this room by some individuals that perhaps PSRC does not suit us. Well, after this presentation, I am more determined and more strong in my belief that PS, PSRC does not serve the interests of the city, this county, the two other counties outside of King County.
Okay. Well, I will, I will sum it up then. I, I think I understand the will of the council here. But there are opportunities to both be there in person during the open houses and then also provide either independent comments by the City of Lakewood or coordinated comments with Pierce County and other jurisdictions. So Mr. Bu and I are going to be reviewing the SEIS and putting together some comments, which will come to you for review. And then we will figure out per your direction, how much of that goes into the, the coordinated comments back to PSRC or go specifically from the City of Lakewood. And that's it, unless you have other questions for me.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, in, in terms of just one other area that didn't particularly see mentioned, but maybe it's because of the high level of your briefing, is that I'm still concerned that an area that we should be concerned with, both on a social equity basis, even though that argument didn't do us much good. But in the, in the, in the, in the long term of, of eliminating in not growing the freight rail utilization in, in areas of, in, in, in urban and housing, in housing areas. And I, I know, I, I think, you know, that amongst all the transportation things, they do look at freight mobility. they do look at freight mobility, that, um, you know, well, we've lost as much as we can afford to use on the Point Defiance bypass route, and we wanna, wanna make sure that, that, and I'm sure that there are other rail corridors with other cities that would, don't wanna see the growth in freight rail traffic in the wrong place.
Understood. That's it. Thank you.
I'm personally inclined on the upcoming 75th anniversary of General Anthony McCullough's famous quote to the Germans at Eston, to give Puget Sound Regional Council the same one-word reply. How's that, Mr. Prof?
Just a few updates on the legislative front. We're kinda in a area of lull. Uh, the legislature is working through a number of bills, it's been a couple of hundred that have already passed out of, uh, each respective house. So some critical path dates, uh, this week is the cutoff date for, um, all bills, um, unless necessary to implement the budget. Next critical path date is a couple of weeks on April 3rd, when, uh, bills must pass out of the opposite houses' policy committee, and then, uh, two weeks later on the 17th of April, bills must pass out of the opposite house, um, whether that's the, the House side or the Senate side. Um, and then they're expected to adjourn on April, April 28th, so that's, that's where they are. Right now, what they're working on is pulling together an operating budget. Uh, the last number I heard was that even though revenues are growing pretty substantially, they're about three and a half billion dollars, um, short on the operating side. Actually, the state's budget could approach, um, $50 billion. I was talking to somebody earlier this morning, I remember when I was 15, uh, which doesn't seem like too long ago, but, um, it's, uh, it's come a long way. Um, there, I think, uh, the big issue is gonna be the types of tax increases that, um, are gonna be, are gonna be proposed. On the capital budget, there's, um, they've received over $770 million worth of requests for the local program, which are cities and counties and, you know, local community organizations, and, uh, um, they expect to have about 70 million available, which translates into about a million dollars per legislative district, actually, actually a little bit greater than in the past, so that's actually a pretty good, that's a pretty good number. So, um, I think it was a couple of years ago, the total capital budget was about 35 million, so the fact that it's 70 million's actually a pretty, a pretty good sign. I'm, I'm pretty confident that, you know, we'll get something in support of our projects. Um, on the transportation side, um, again, what we're hearing is that the $17 billion transportation package that has been proposed in the Senate is not gonna make it out of this session. Um, I'm a little antsy on that because it seems to be moving, um, and that is also dependent on some pretty significant, uh, tax increases. But again, what I'm hearing is it's not gonna move this session, and it'll come back next session and a session thereafter, but to be determined. I think the council's aware that we did send down, um, our, our comments and suggestions regarding that proposal, specifically it relates to the I-5, I-5 corridor. If that, for some reason, picks up speed, um, what we'll probably do is go down to Olympia and set some meetings with our two senators. And by the way, the reason the Senate is, 'cause the bill is being proposed out of the Senate, the House doesn't have a bill. So, uh, other than that, yeah, we're, uh, moving forward. Locally, uh, our new website, website has been launched, I wanna commend, uh, Communications Manager Bryn Grimley, nice job. It's actually a whole lot easier to navigate and get around and find stuff. We are having a couple of minor glitches, one of them being with the YouTube videos, but, uh, they're working on that, they'll get that issue resolved. Didn't know if that maybe had to do with a call for the breakup of a whole bunch of technical companies here in the United States, or what, so... Nothing, I got nothing on that? I got nothing on that? Nothing? Uh, yeah, AT&amp;T. On, on April 8th, uh, we have invited South Sound 911 to come and give the council an update on changing governance and how SS, I'm sorry, South Sound 911 will be, will be formed. I was talking to our fire chief, uh, Jim Sharp, and, um, we'd like to recommend that we use that as an opportunity to have a joint board meeting between the fire district and the city council, and do that first. Jim did get back to me, and he said his board would be available that evening, and so unless there's any objection, Mayor, like to go ahead and, and do that, and then, also, that helps South Sound 911 in that they don't have to go to multiple, they get, you know, two of the six in, in, in one meeting. But I think there would be value in having, um, the board and the city council hear that presentation and express any comments, questions, et cetera, to South Sound 911. The, um, we're gonna send a couple of staff members to a meeting that Forterra and the Puget Sound Salmon Group have called, and it relates to the Chambers Bay Restoration Project, and I know Pierce County is familiar with this, and, long story short, what it is, is to, uh, remove that dam that's down there and do a restoration of the S2ary and, uh, Chambers Bay and all the way up into Chambers Creek. And, uh, so we've been asked to attend a meeting to provide some feedback and input. I did email you the draft study that they've put together. Initially, it was, uh, kind of a Parks and Rec League, um, however, given what, what potentially is being proposed on the adjoining property up on the cliff, which is where the Fort Silicon Golf Course used to be, um, we thought it would be beneficial to send somebody from our Community and Economic Development Department, so we're gonna be sending Tiffany Spear as, 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 as well. So, I know this is just in the preliminary stages, but...
It's, it's so preliminary that I think Forterra's trying to force a place for themselves in the process and gain control so that they can be a grant recipient, uh, for, with, with respect to property that they don't own, and over which they don't obviously have any municipal jurisdiction, so this, there might be some tensions there.
You know, I, I will add, though, if you look at the alternatives, I mean, they're very, very impressive. If you look at alternative three in terms of removing the dam and, and, and really returning that area to how it was, um, you know, back in the 17 and early 1800s, would be a tremendous amenity for our region here if we could pull this off, or if they could pull it off. So I'll just add that, yeah. It'd be nice.
Channel suggested to Congressman Hack that, uh, although he wasn't, uh, optimistic about the, the chances of, of developing some major project that would envision the participation of the tribes, reinstituting hatchery-run fish and feeding orcas, so there's, everybody wins, uh, because that dam is gonna, it's, it's gotta go, it has no useful purpose, it has, is not maintained, and it's gonna fail at some point.
And then just lastly, as it relates to your calendar, um, this, this Thursday morning, EFN is gonna have their annual recognition breakfast, and the city's being recognized on two fronts. One is, uh, Lakewood Police Department and our Chief Mike Zarro, and, uh, Joanne Nichols, um, his assistant, will be attending, accepting award there. And then, uh, just kinda general government is being recognized as well, and so we have Mary McDougal, our HR Director, Mary Dodsworth, our, um, Park and Rec Director, and Tammy Dove, um, one of our finance technicians going to accept that award, so I wanna thank EFN for that. And then, uh, I, I just, um, Caring for Kids is having a, a bit of an event this coming for Saturday evening, they're having a fundraiser, a dance and celebration over at the Elks Club. Uh, a week from tomorrow is Communities and Schools, uh, 2019 Champions for Youth Breakfast. And then, um, and then in April, um, the city clerk, uh, Brianna Schumacher, is working on trying to identify a date and a place for our, um, annual volunteer appreciation, appreciation event, and we're trying to see if we can, uh, maybe do it down at the, um, Park in the Pavilion, the Jason Wayland Event Center. So, that's what we're, we're trying to, we're trying to pull off. And so, right now, we're looking at kind of a, a breakfast type, type event. Yes, so like your boards and commissions and other community volunteers that worked, work with the city. Yeah, similar, similar to what we've done in the past. I think in the past, we've had about eight or nine tables of folks, so...
Uh, is, is there a date floating out there for a, a, a grand opening dedication of the Cohen Clinic?
So, yeah, actually, I was tracking that a couple of weeks ago, and I, I think they've had a soft opening, but I haven't heard or seen anything. I'll see if we, if we find anything, I'll, I'll see if we can track something down, I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you know, council member. I also saw something somewhere that they were actually opening up another facility, I think in Tacoma as well, um, or they were thinking about it. I don't know if you had...
I don't know. My understanding is some communications say Tacoma, some say Lakewood, but then it's only, it's only one.
Okay, well, so, but if we hear of anything, we'll certainly let you know.
Any other questions? We'll go to council comments, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to ask, uh, in one of my, uh, colleagues would fill in for me Thursday night, I'm scheduled to attend the, uh, Lake City Neighborhood Association meeting, and I'm double booked. I can't make that one if someone could take that for me. Thank you, thank you. And I wanted to thank Deputy Mayor Wayland for the invitation to the boot camp. It was very informative, uh, interesting, and I'll let him expand on it more, but, uh, they gave some good tools for future thinking, so, on that one, that was good. Well, well-attended, too. The EDB luncheon was great, although it wasn't a winner, I was glad to see that. Their new building, the John Waltham Advanced Manufacturing Technology Building was, um, nominated, and that's the building that just went up in front of the student center, yeah, in front of the college. And see, and finally, I have been invited to the Washington State, by the Washington State Members of Color Caucuses, the leaders of the Ethic Commission, and the Governor's Office of Indian Affairs to attend the 2019 Electoral Officials of Color Reception, and it's scheduled for Monday night, which is, which will be held at the Governor's, Governor's Executive Resident in Olympia. But I do plan to be at the meeting next Monday night, but I will be late. So with that, that's all I have.
Great, great. Mr. Bulkey. Mr. Bransford.
Uh, today, I, this morning, I had the occasion to go to Olympia. I actually went down to testify, uh, at a, at a senate hearing on a, on a, on a bill that related to, to, to the National Guard regarding, uh, how National Guard members are compensated for wildfire fighting, something that, uh, the Veterans Legislative Coalition asked me to go on their behalf and, and support that bill. But I also got a chance to, uh, to meet with, uh, Representative Levitt and Representative Morgan, um, that they, they were both, um, positive in their commitment to trying to move the things that we would like to see moved forward. Uh, they're also candid about some things that they think are not gonna get out of, get out of the house, to be able to go and do that, but they were also positive on others. And, uh, and, you know, I really got the feeling, particularly, it was my first face-to-face chance to talk with Representative Morgan, and, uh, you know, uh, got the feeling that she was a good listener, okay, uh, and, uh, was able to, to, to work forward in doing that. The other thing is, is that, uh, the, um, in, the, the Sister Cities Association in the city has received, uh, invitation, uh, it was actually for the mayor to attend a spring, uh, festival that they have in Gimhe, Korea, which is one of our friendship cities, and the mayor cannot go, and I'm, uh, I, I, I'm looking to take advantage of that opportunity to represent the city and, and go with your comments. Gimhe has committed to sending a seven-member delegation to our city in July during the Summer Fest period, so I think it's important that we at least have a, a delegation of a few folk between the sister cities and the city to, to be able to go, to, to be able to go and do that. So, unless I'm displacing someone else who has a desire to do that, I'd like to do that.
I thought it was appropriate that Mike go, 'cause he's the only one with the outfit.
Yeah, well, I do, I, I, I do, I do, I do have that to take, and I, and I, and I, and I have the services of an interpreter.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Mr. Simpson.
Yeah, I'd be, oh, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, two things, I attended the, um, Telkum Woodbrook Neighborhood Association meeting last night, or, uh, last Thursday evening, it was well-attended, it was a good meeting. The only complaint I heard is the synchronization of lights at both ends of Union Avenue, that's the only thing I heard. I will not be with you next Monday. Uh, it is my wife's birthday, and to answer the mayor's question, I would be nuts if I wasn't there. That's all I have to say.
She can always come here.
No, I don't think that's gonna happen, so...
We, 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 we could pitch in and get a cake.
Pizza, pizza and a cake.
You know what, you know what, you guys, you know what, I'm gonna fly, I'm gonna run that idea by here. Now, then I'll come back the week following and tell you what the response was.
If, 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 if you're ambulatory. Yeah, Mr. Wayland.
Just two things, I, uh, on behalf of EDB, I got to chair the event, I thought it was a nice event with Rebecca Ryan, who was an economist futurist, and as Ms. Moss indicated, she had a boot camp the day prior with a bunch of folks, about 70 people in the audience from the community, ran people through a process for strategic planning, it really focused on a future focus based on hard data, uh, in which we were entitled to ask questions of each other, and raised analyses for a plan based upon whether something was certain and if certain along the continuum, whether it had impact, high or low, so it was kind of interesting, you know, something we could look at down the road as a, kind of a fun way to, to do strategic planning and goal-setting for ourselves. Other than that, I thought it was a good event. EDB had about 600 and some odd people there at the luncheon, uh, seemed to go pretty well, and people feel like they got something out of it.
I, uh, attended the Association Defense Communities Innovation, uh, Forum in Miami, uh, last week. Uh, it took me, uh, in a 36-hour period, I traveled over eight time zones, uh, 10, 10,000-plus miles and, and, uh, a Dateline to get there, but very little sleep, found out it's, to get there for an eight o'clock interview with respect to potential nomination for the board. On the first day, at 7:00 AM on that day, I was asked to fill in on a, on a panel, given that I wanted to be in their good graces, I told the COO that I would fill in on the panel, I went through the interview, and at 10 o'clock, I got a follow-up, uh, with an outline of my presentation, I didn't realize it was a presentation, so I was up, well, in front of 100-plus people, um, at, at 1:00, uh, on a couple hours' notice, uh, presenting, and it came off. Uh, that's what trial work will do for you.
Yeah, there you go.
The, um, you know, you gotta keep the outline and, and go. Some, uh, the most valuable part of the meeting, however, was, uh, meeting with Kristen Thomasgard, who you met, uh, from the repi program, uh, in the lobby. Uh, I was gonna say hello and start to walk away, 'cause she wasn't otherwise engaged, and she, she goes, "No, no, I got an update for you, come back here," and, and so, we talked for about a half hour. She's very supportive, has a path for the million and a half repi money for a clear zone. Uh, encroachment issues is, is, says this is an unusual one, has taken it on as a project, trying to make the, make the Army and the Air, she's from DOD, she's trying to make the Army and the Air Force be reasonable, and, and, um, very, very supportive and encouraging, so maybe she thinks we can get it, that part of it done this, into this fiscal year. Of course, we need $3 million from the state, too. So, that's another problem. Uh, there also is, uh, I learned that with respect to this repi money, which is, um, EFE stands for environmental, by the way, uh, there is, uh, an opportunity in the air corps zone, especially in APZ-1, to use repi money to acquire, uh, mobile home parks, which are in the creche zones, well, beyond the creche zone. which are in creche zones, or beyond the creche zone in the- and we have a couple that are within APZ-1, which extends roughly a mile. So basically, you're looking from the end of the clear zone to 96th Street for APZ-1, and then another mile and a quarter for APZ-2. Yeah, but what they've done, they've been pretty innovative about attrition. They don't have to do it today. But you can pick them off as people move out or, you know, by the owner's interest, by the owner of the unit's interest separate from the park interest. So there may be an opportunity for upgrading our housing and converting that to a use that's allowed in an air corridor instead of the non-conforming residential use. So in the long run, if we could tap into that, we could potentially remove low-quality housing that's non-conforming from zoning and replace it with conforming uses and recover some of the money invested. So it presents a real opportunity, I think. Another thing that came up is that resilience is the big buzzword at the Pentagon these days. And the rail project in front of their main gate is a resilience issue to them, which came out unsolicited, is that they don't like high-speed train coming by there.
They don't like it.
They don't like it there because it presents a potential problem with their continuity of operations. The, as far as that board nomination goes, the competition's pretty stiff. Don't know how many, none of, a couple of us who I had contact with, there's only one spot that isn't an incumbent. They, the process is they nominate a slate of single, one for each spot, and that's voted on as a kind of a plebiscite in June. So no information on that, although I am now on the Federal Outreach Advisory Committee, which is about 10 of us, which is basically a lobbying policy group.
Very good.
I'm glad to be back, my own bed. Anything further? Word, Jordan.